will now be recorded. Unmuted.
I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome to the Lander County Commission Meeting, Town Board of Battle Mountain and Austin, Board of County Highway Commissioners. Will you, uh, yeah, will you go ahead and lead us in the process, please?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna have a moment of silence. All right, moving forward. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15 PM. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda. Commissioners reports on meetings, conferences, seminars attended. Passy?
Thank you. I just have a couple things to share. One is, um, as we are starting back on our road to normalcy, the good news is Kingston is going to do their picnic this year. So that will be in August, and we'll bring you more details and flyers and such. But they just made the decision to do that, and that's exciting. Also, the military is coming in to do some exercises at our airport this month, like the 18th and the 21st. Thank you.
All right, very good. So I attended the lead-in meeting, and it looks like we're all a go for moving ahead with the applications that Kyla had put out for us through the lobbyists for the Cook House, the La Mer Building, Austin Community Center, and the Grammar School. So right now, it looks like the target date for answers will be in October. And if we are funded for those projects, the funding will be coming out in 2022. So that's all I have.
No repeat.
All right. Oh, and something that wasn't a meeting that I can mention here. After the legislature closed, I got a, received a call from Pete O'Katie, and he stated even though that they had created a new levy, a tax for, and set those bills and resolutions aside, it doesn't stop those from coming back on the next special meeting that they have, or on the next legislature. He said that that doesn't stop, even though they agreed on this, it doesn't stop them from coming back and trying to still change the net proceeds. So he said just to always be aware that those are not always 100% protected, and that they always have the ability. They were trying to get the agreement that they would not come back, and that they would try to deal with the new tax separately. But he said that that did not, that part of the bill did not go through. So just everybody be aware of that, even though it's, everything's good now, it never stops them from coming back again. So I just wanted to make sure that I shared that, and that's all for me. So, staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended.
Good morning. So on the, what we might end up calling is a litigation hearing to talk to our attorneys on that litigation for the net proceeds. My understanding of the bill that they passed, this AB 495, it's a 42-page bill, so I haven't had a chance to go through the whole thing. But my understanding is that the mines are paying the 2% directly to the state that's going to go directly to the schools. And if it's ever reapproached, that they would pull that money from the schools, and the schools having the biggest union in the state is kind of the mines' security or insurance on them never reapproaching this net proceeds thing back in front of the assembly. But I want to be sure of that, and that's why I was hoping to get Brian on the phone today, so he can explain that and his understanding of the language as well, so I'm not misspeaking anywhere. But that is my understanding of that bill and how the protections that the mines put in on their 2% moving forward, so they don't have to revisit this again, because this has been a 10-year battle for them on the net proceeds and how it's approached. So with that, everything else I have is on the agenda, and we'll go from there.
All right, very good. For public comment, for non-agendized items only. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any non-agendized items at the board meeting, if any. And discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comments may be limited to three minutes per person, again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comment based upon time, place, and manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Do we have any public comment this time? All right.
Muted. Unmuted.
Moving forward. For consent on agenda, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. Bless you. One, approval of June 10th, 2021, agenda notice. Two, approval of May 7th, 2020, special budget workshop meeting minutes. Three, approval of May 13th, 2021, meeting minutes. Four, approval of May 27th, 2021, meeting minutes. Five, approval of payroll change requests.
I didn't receive any minutes. Did you, Patsy?
No, and I didn't get any payroll change requests either.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion that we approve item one, approval of June 10th, 2021, agenda notice.
I'll second the motion.
Brian made the motion, Patsy second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the payments of bills. So we have a few checks that we're going to pull out separately. So for, um...
We're gonna call Art. He's gonna be on, I think, for the first six items or anything.
Okay, so I'll wait.
He's on, he's on the river right now.
Okay. So I'll wait to go in. Not at all. Okay. So do you want me to wait on that and go to number five first? Because you guys wanted to put five to number one.
No, you can, you can say how you'd like.
Okay.
If you want, reach out, he said, reach out.
Okay, then we'll do five after this one. So we're gonna go ahead and pull out check number 212027 for Point S. Check number 1673 to Crux, if I'm saying that correctly. Check number 1649 to Crux. And then check number 211991 to Blue Moon. So we want to, for all the other bills?
I'll make a motion to approve the remainder of bills.
All right, can I have a second? All right, Brian made the motion. JR second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. So then, can we get a motion on check number 212027?
I'll make a motion, we approve that, 212027.
All right, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Patsy made the motion, JR second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I abstain, it's made to my employer.
All right. So then, a motion on check number 1673 and 1649? Pardon me?
Isn't there another check?
Oh, I'm sorry, and 211991, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, now, you pulled those because we wanted to discuss them?
No, we pulled them because I was going to vote nay on them, and we didn't have enough to vote correctly last time. That's all.
Okay, how about the other one, the 191?
That's the same thing as the other one.
All three of them? And do we want to do any discussion on them?
It's up to you. I didn't have any discussion, I'm just voting nay.
Okay, I mean, you certainly can. Do you want to give us any reason why you're voting against them?
One of them is, for one of them is a personal reason, the other is on, for the Blue Moon and...
Okay, these are all, all three checks are on the rally, is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, and so then, the three of them, for me, is a personal reason. And then the other, the other reason I have for the Crux is that the price of it and the expense of that. And I wish that that was something I was going to put on through the agenda, as an agenda item, is that on such, if we can look at possibly purchasing our own stage and things like that, so we would never, when we utilize something like that in the future, that we have our own instead of paying. So it's two-sided. One part of it's a personal reason. The other side of it is the expense of it on the Crux. Okay?
Okay, so my question would be, on the two checks for the rally, it came out of what department?
Out of mine.
That is.
So budgetarily, it was covered.
It was covered.
It was in the budget to be covered.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Well, it was, it was just an item that we didn't have on the budget, that's all. And I wonder where it came out from.
And so, yeah, and then my, so it's known, and I will ask at a later time if it can be put on for something that the county can outright look at cost effectiveness to purchase something like that, so...
And then you state that it's a personal issue. I could claim every one of my checks is a personal issue, you know, because it's my employer, but we work for the public, so maybe you should disclose what the personal issue was.
Absolutely. The personal issue has to do with my daughter. And my feeling, I don't know how to explain that correctly, so it doesn't sound... My personal issue on that is, for relevance of my daughter and for her position within the military, I felt it uncomfortable for myself to be doing that in reference to her. And so that's my personal, that's my personal part on it. Without, because I would be more than happy to say whatever, but I don't know what I'm limited to say on her behalf without overstating something. So truly, I do, I don't have a problem saying what the issue is, but I don't know what, where my limit is to saying that without saying too much in regard to her and her position within the military.
Could our...
That's just my...
Could our, do you want to talk, I mean, Tess on the phone?
I mean, well, it has to do, well, okay, I'll say it and pray to God that I don't step on myself. For an issue with the Department of Justice and a place where she's, a program that she's going into within the military, I did not want to have a part of that section because I didn't want to be, I had to have backgrounds done on me. And I didn't want, for a position she's going into in the military. And I didn't want to put her position in jeopardy on a decision that I made.
For a patriotic social gathering?
Believe it or not, yes. And so I, so this is what, so and I will, I will freely say this. I was, when speaking with somebody within the Department of Justice, because I had more information afterwards, I was told that there was a possibility on this whole thing that I wouldn't pass, but that didn't jeopardize her. Even though I didn't pass a background, that was a possibility because of how, and it was because of what's going on now. If we would have gone, done this a year ago, there probably wouldn't have been an issue. But with the way things are looking now, I was told there was a possibility that I wouldn't pass the background for the Department of Justice. Now, that was the reason, I didn't want to jeopardize anything with her, but I was also told that, even though I didn't pass, we're two separate things, and she probably would have been just fine, but I just didn't want to take that chance of that. That, that was my, it was an uncomfortable position for me. So that was, that's my personal reason. I didn't want to jeopardize anything for her.
Okay. What were the two check numbers? Do you have the check numbers, Patsy, written down?
I have them. They're 16...
Here, give them to me, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion, we pay check number 1673 and number 1649 to Crux, and check number 211991 to Blue Moon.
And a second?
I'll second it.
All right, so Brian made the motion, JR second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? That would be me.
No, I am, I'm listening to what you're saying, Kathy, and I'm a little bit confused because we're talking about the reason for the rally and the plaque and the association that we joined, which I did not support. But these are the funds for the rally, and it was the county that put it on. So that being said, although I still was against the association, I am going to vote a, so we can pay our bills.
Thank you, Patsy.
Are they all in favor then?
Aye.
All right. And then nay? Moving forward. So we're gonna, or do we, do you want to go to number five?
If we could.
So can we go, move forward to number five? For discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove, or amend proposed ordinance 2021-02, amending Lander County Code Title V, Chapter 08, to establish a uniform liquor license process and all other matters properly related thereto. After being read by title by the board, if approved, the procedure contained in NRS 244.100 must be followed.
So my first question would be for our sheriff. Have you looked through it, Ron? And you're good with everything on the change to the ordinance?
Ron, under Sheriff for the record, yes, I have. I haven't gone through every single one of them. Want me to turn this on?
Please.
Hi.
Morning, Ron.
All right, Ron Unger for the record, yes, I will oversee, I reviewed most of it at this point in time. And just to give you guys a little heads up on this, this is something, this ordinance, we have been asked for several years through the DA's office. We needed to make some changes on it, so that's exactly what it did. A lot of us are saying that there's a lot of differences in it. And what the differences are, is we had to add like the catering service, the wagons and that type of stuff, so we added that to here.
Very nice. Then I have a question.
So it's a cleanup deal is essentially what it was.
For legal, so in here, when reading through it, it has stated unincorporated. When you put that in there, since we're not incorporated, is the word unincorporated staying there versus incorporated? I was reading through, so I was a little bit confused as well. Because it keeps saying unincorporated. But with... Well, yes, that I know, but I didn't put a sticky on what I was. That was my only question, and so you know, I mean, you guys know. Ted, you know.
Well, we are unincorporated, so that's why I've done that. And to make it robust, robust and I have gone over each and every part of it.
Oh, no, that's nice.
To me, and I reviewed each and every part of it.
Okay. And I didn't put a sticky, so apparently that I'm good then. It's very nice. Thanks to everybody who worked on it.
It does. It certainly makes things clearer. I mean, we've been kind of winging it a little bit on some of the things.
It cleared up a lot of the gray areas, and of course, as things change, this has been in there for a lot of years with the catering services and stuff.
The prices, yeah, the prices all stayed the same, and the authority all stays the same, so...
Just the language. Thank you.
Thanks. Ted, so do we have to read the summary and the title, or just the title?
Title.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve. An ordinance amending Lander County Code Title, Chapter 8, to establish a uniform liquor license seeing process, providing fees therefor and penalties for violations relating thereto and other matters properly relating thereto. And authorize the chair to sign?
Ted, do we need to reference the NRS on that at all?
Uh, well, you could, but it could be referenced in the title. It's proposed, well, yeah, you can add the proposed ordinance 2021-02, amending Lander County Code Title V, Chapter 8.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Thank you.
All right, Brian made the motion, Patsy second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Mr. Kathy, can we move to, item 19 for Mr. Allen Calt?
We're gonna move forward to item 19. For discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the renewal proposed proposal from Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool in the amount not to exceed $493,434.83 and to approve payment for fiscal year 2021, 2022 funds. This is an increase of $57,291.10 from fiscal year 2020/2021.
Good morning. Good morning. For the record, I'm Allen Calt. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for PoolPact. I love to get out to the world. In my former job, I was a Churchill County Comptroller in Fallon. And one of the awesome things about joining PoolPact is that I'm able to help all counties and cities and members, you know, not just those in Fallon. So appreciate your membership within PoolPact. We're gonna have a PowerPoint presentation that will get queued up. Talk about, what I want to talk about is pool, the programs and services we provide, the coverage levels, you know, what your membership provides. Discuss those things that we have going on and encourage continued active participation within the pool. And then at the very end, open it up to any question and answers. If you were to go to our website at poolpack.com, and there's a tab that says about, if you were to click on that, that you could launch a video. And I showed it last year during the commission update of the history of the pool and why the pool was formed and those type of things. And, you know, it's a great, it's a quick video that gives an overview for those folks who are not familiar with PoolPact and why we were established. So what I'd like to do is quickly go over some of our mission and our vision and values. We're owned by you, the members, okay? We're a member services consortium that provides interactive risk management resources for the public agencies. We excel in innovative solutions that help the members serve the public, you know, help those residents, you know, you, and you've helped serve the folks in Battle Mountain. We have financial strength, security, and durability. We've never had to have a special assessment put in place, okay? We provide cost-effective risk-sharing programs because we're able to pool together and buy those things. And we're a member governed stewards of public assets, and we're focused on the future. You know, it's okay, we don't, we don't need to do the PowerPoint, it's fine. Yeah. So the pool's goals, we want to incorporate risk management, you know, into management within the organizations. We've worked with your county managers, the sheriff's office, and we appreciate their support and their willingness to do some great things in the community to help protect the employees, the citizens, and deliver effective programs. You know, we believe in working cooperatively to deliver public agencies' risk management solutions. The members are the center of everything we do, both in our property liability and our workers' comp program. So let's talk about the insurance marketplace, the state of the marketplace. A lot of this information was included in your packet, your renewal proposal. The property market continues to be difficult. The underwriters are pulling back their limits, their capacity. You know, they're concerned about policy wording. They've had underwriting losses, and because of the fixed income market, they're not getting, it's so low, the interest rates are so low, they're not being able to make as much money on that, so they're raising the rates associated with that. Today, as I was driving out, the 10-year treasure bill right now is trading at under 150 basis points, so, you know, 1.5% interest. They've had catastrophic losses, those continue because of the named storms. We have some of the major players leaving the property marketplace. As a pool, and we've seen it even in, you know, here in Lander County, increases in the insured values. Your insured values were up 4.9%, your auto counts were up 3%. One of the other challenges in the marketplace is cyber coverage. You know, right now, the big news is, you know, the different cyber hacks, the pain of ransomware, those things. It's increased significantly during the pandemic. We have some products that we provide for the members to take advantage of. One is called No Before, and it is a software solution that's a training mechanism that we can provide to you guys. Have it input, all your folks' email address is, it's an educational tutorial program. And it teaches them not to go, open up those suspicious emails. So and then you can set up where you actually send practice emails to them if they actually open it up and, you know, try to get that free gift card at Starbucks or Amazon, then, you know, it's gonna send them to training, they're gonna have to watch a short video and say, hey, you know what, you should not have clicked on here, you know, and go back to remedial training. On the casualty insurance side, some of the challenges we're seeing on the viability losses is social inflation. The amount of the award verdicts, the defense costs are escalating significantly. If you look at the top 50 verdicts, they're up 318% since 2014. And we feel that, you know, and the industry feels that that's a trend going forward. We're having challenges on the sexual assault and molestation, law enforcement, excessive force issues on a national level. We're not seeing that in Nevada yet, but when they do their insurance placements, they look at, you know, the whole, you know, national scene and, you know, police brutality and cases, we've seen what's taking place nationally. Our limits remain the same in the upcoming year. We were able to retain those same limits. We did have an increase. The budget of the pool, 72% of our dollars go to support the loss fund, the insurance expense. Typically, for an insurance company, they only spend 50%, so they have to raise that rate, okay? We're a nonprofit, many of our insured, our reinsurance companies are nonprofits. They're pools of pools, so, you know, that's able to help keep our costs low. Our programs at PoolPact, we basically have them identified as six separate distinct categories. Just like in law enforcement, they say, we got your six, we got your back. At Pool, we have six different types of services that are so integral to helping entities do a better job, making the best entities even better. We have human resources, risk management, our e-learning platform, health and wellness, cybersecurity, law enforcement, and school safety. Real quick, going over some of the HR programs. You have a HR business partner assigned to you, you know, and there's a lot of support services. They've converted a lot of their training into Zoom training sessions. And they will, now that things are opened up, they can continue to come back onsite and provide training, you know, here in Battle Mountain, you know, for your organization. Their HR summit was held virtually this past year. The attendance was a little bit higher because people were able to do it without having to travel, travel into Reno. Historically, that conference has been in Reno. This upcoming year in September, when they hold the conference, they're gonna hold it in Reno, plus they're also gonna have available virtuals to those folks who don't have the ability to travel, will be able to participate online. This past year, we renegotiated a contract on our EAP program at a lower cost and actually a higher level of service. You know, at Pool, we do what you folks have been doing, is budget mitigation, evaluating all contracts, making sure we're getting the best bang for our buck. We have an e-learning portal platform, and, you know, here in Lander County, Under Sheriff Quick has taken a leadership role and has been active in that e-learning program at the sheriff's office for many years. You know, we would encourage folks to expand that coverage beyond, you know, just one department. It's available to the entire county. There's a whole suite of over 150 different classes. And by having these e-learning platforms, departments can assign, or the county manager or could assign training to different folks, give them a timeframe. A lot of those videos are 20 minutes or less. It's an interactive deal. You take a little quiz at the end, and it provides documentation that in fact the folks have received that training. What we're seeing in some of our school districts, rural school districts, is they're using that when the school board adopts a new policy, and they develop and send out that policy to all the employees. They go ahead and create a quick five-minute, seven-minute, whatever it may be, depending on the length of that policy, e-learning course. It's assigned to everyone, they go in, they read the policy. And by completing the acknowledgement and taking one, two-question, you know, test, if you will, or, you know, about what's included in the policy, it provides the documentation that they have received that. You can develop your own courses. Our e-learning wizard, Mike Van Houten, was willing to work with your folks and is working with Under Sheriff on, you know, we have a quirk, you know, in the system right now that hasn't been updated, and I know they're working diligently, and we appreciate your patience, you know, as that gets worked out. And using this, again, it provides e-signatures that employees, you know, have received mandated training. And using this, again, it provides e-signatures that employees, you know, have received mandated training that you folks may want those folks to have. In the cyber arena, we did have done a passive network assessment several years ago at Lander County, and it looked at the, your networks, and if any deficiencies were noted, they were brought to the attention of your folks so they could address those. There's a quarterly IT working, cyber working group with Tony Rucci, our forensic virtual risk officer. And if there are cyber events, we have a team in place through Tony and his folks to help address those immediately with the goal, hoping that we don't have to pay ransomware, that you're able to restore from the backup and those type of things. They hold quarterly meetings, virtual meetings, so everyone stays up to speed. Every year, for the last five years, we've had an annual cyber summit where we bring in resources from the state of Nevada, some national resources, and Mr. Rucci to make sure people are investing in the right type of equipment, firewalls, and protection for your systems. Within the Absorb platform and the No Before, they've created twenty micro learning courses. To take those micro learning courses, it takes two minutes, two minutes, and it's just a quick, you know, trying to fight cybercrime, one email at a time, so that, you know, people don't hit the clickbait, you know, they don't bring in that virus within the organization. And that's something that, again, all of these services are included as part of your membership within PoolPact. We have a loss control excellence program, the loss control committee. This past year, they revamped it. They made it more robust. There's a lot more questions. But it's a great opportunity for an organization to look at their loss control organization, employment practices, fiscal controls, IT, transportation, law enforcement, parks and recs, facilities, utilities, those type of things to make sure they're doing things, using best practices. Where there's deficiencies, we will work with you to help improve those, if there are any, so that you are able to be a, you know, an awesome organization and minimize any weaknesses that may exist out there. By completing this program, at the end successfully, there's a financial incentive that's available, and given the size of this organization, probably be in the round of ten to fifteen thousand dollars. And you can use that money to invest in safety-related stuff to help, you know, maybe fund any deficiencies that may exist. We've done jail assessments, audits, you know, and real pleased with how awesome, you know, the operations are here in Lander County. So looking at the actual pool renewal, our challenges this year was with the school district coverage. United Educators, our reinsurance with that, that on a national level, there's been some issues that they had, and that affected the pricing relating to schools more so, you know, because the school coverages are allocated among school members and not among what we call the munis, the cities, the counties, and the general improvement districts. Overall, the pool overall increase was ten point two percent. The county increase was eight point four percent. Members had varying levels of increases and decreases based on their exposures. So that's a quick overview. I'd be open to any questions, any concerns you may have, additional thoughts, you know, as it relates to, you know, PoolPact. And again, we thank you so much for your active participation, and especially those folks, you know, the Under Sheriff, County Manager, who are working to, you know, take advantage of the member services.
Thank you, Allen. I do have a few questions.
Sure.
One, you said that police brutality was up nationwide, but not particularly our state. Do you have the data of like which, which cities or states set us up in? Because I'd be interested in seeing that data, if that's possible to...
You know what, Commissioner, I'd be happy to get that information to you.
Yeah, I'd be very interested in seeing that. And then...
Minnesota would be one, as you might imagine.
Okay. And then e-learning, so is that something that's currently being used in rural schools?
So, so what, the e-learning platform that we have...
For the policy?
Is, well, that is a professional development. So what they're doing at the sheriff's office, and, you know, the Under Sheriff can speak to it, and the sheriff is here as well, is they, there's courses, policies, training, those types of things, you know, that courses they can take. And on the law enforcement side, we have national courses that are developed through our relationships with national carriers. It's continuing ed, if you will. Some of the classes they take are allowed towards post-credit. So the officers are able to log onto the computer, take that class, okay, and stay current on their policies and procedures and those types of things.
Is that something we're currently using in our department?
Absolutely. Go.
Robert Quick for the sheriff's office. We've been using the e-learning platform on PoolPact for many, many years.
Okay.
I know recently the HR has initiated it for the county side as well.
Okay.
But it's, it's got quite an extensive number of training courses.
Well, I mean, I like it because that's what we're doing. It's, we're governed by policy, and it's important that everybody knows it. So if we can put it together in a learning module, it's genius. So my question back to you, Allen, was, is our local school using this? Because you had, you had reference schools using it as well.
You know what, I did not do the renewal for Lander County. I believe they are. I know Churchill, Humboldt, Lion, or what we call power users. I mean, some of those have over ten thousand course completions. And one of the things that some of the schools do is when the teachers come back and the staff come back, that first couple of days before school starts, they assign those mandatory required classes, okay? And the teachers and the staff are able to do that at their leisure. And my wife, being a school teacher, you know, one of the things that used to happen is the first two days, they were, you know, have all this continuing ed going on, and they're worried about trying to get in the classroom, get everything ready for the students, and that type of thing. And the fact, what a lot of school districts are doing with this e-learning platform is they assign it two weeks ahead of time, and they give them maybe a month to take those classes. So they can log on, you know, through the district's website, take the class. It may be a ten-minute class on, you know, bullying, you know, drug-free workplace, you know, those type of things.
With these, so like with the schools, and we're looking at putting it on a county level, that would, that would take into all county elected officials as well, correct?
Oh, sure. You could assign, you know, the sheriff's office assigns the classes that they deem appropriate for people within their own department. Some classes may, you know, may be investigator-specific, so they may assign those. You know, at the school level, you know, the janitors will have to take, you know, MSDS-type training, you know, and a more specialized training related to their work that, let's say, a teacher or a principal or vice principal may not have. So it's, you're able to customize, and that's the beauty of this.
Yeah, no, it is genius. And then you also made a statement that throughout the state that the rate has gone up due in fact that schools, there's been some issues. What are those types of issues that we're seeing that have caused the rates to rise?
Okay, so what, the two primary issues that are affecting schools are sexual abuse and molestation.
Okay.
Okay? And the second one is cyber. We're seeing that schools have been hacked, and we've, and that's been our experience actually in the Nevada pool as well, on cyber. So United Educators, what they did is on that sexual abuse and molestation coverage, they raised their, the attachment points. So it used to attach at five hundred thousand and above. They moved it up to a million. So what we ended up doing is having our captive take that extra five hundred thousand dollar of coverage. And then what they also did is capped the annual aggregate amount that they would pay, you know, if everything went to heck, if you will, and you had, you know, multiple claims and all of that, their maximum exposure. They capped out at twelve and a half million dollars. So the pool, the captive PRM has made up for that difference. But those costs were allocated to those members in the same way. In the same way, if we had significant challenges, let's say, in law enforcement, okay? And the carriers that provide law enforcement coverage, because if we had, you know, in Nevada, a specific case that caused law enforcement, you know, rates to go way up, then that would be allocated amongst those public entities that have law enforcement.
Okay. Thank you.
I do have, Allen. Thank you, and thank you for your visit today. We know you're only a phone call away, and Lander County is very good about that when we have concerns, so thank you. But one of the things that I still don't understand, and that's, that was something that actually you and I both sat on the board together ten, twelve years ago.
Oh, sure.
When we actually had to appoint an insurance agent that we paid a commission to, to represent the different entities. And I know we, we had quite a discussion. As a matter of fact, we postponed it for a year before we even went into effect. And I guess that's one of my questions. We don't really have anything to do with our insurance agent per se. We call and talk directly to the PoolPact people. And I'm wondering, how do, I guess what, I don't understand the value of it, first of all. And the other is, just where do we have the decision factor if we wanted to change insurance agents? Do they apply to you to be the agent? Because they don't come to us and ask us to be the agent. So how can we go about really modernizing that? And maybe even if they aren't doing anything for the value that they're getting, can we look at maybe cutting commissions or something like that? I mean, it's definitely something that should come before your board.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Waits-Patsy. Yeah, we had that discussion many years ago, and I was at Churchill County at the time, and we contacted the pool. And this is, you had to be a licensed insurance agent. So the HR director and I looked at each other and said, all right, which one of us wants to go take the test? You know, because, yeah, we, we had the relationship with PoolPact, just like Lander County has our relationship. You know, Wayne Carlson's a phone call away, Allen Kalt's a phone call away, Marshall Smith, our risk officer, a phone call away. So let me let you know that Susie Davis had planned on being here today. Something came up. She emailed me, you know, last night and said she's not going to be able to make it. She apologizes for that. On our website, we have, at poolpack.com, it sounds like an advertisement, but poolpack.com on the website, there's, under the Agents tab, there are best practices of what your agent should be doing for you, okay? And you guys are the ones who pick your agents, you know, and they have what's called a letter of record, a broker of record, okay? You appoint those. We have a list of, you know, agencies or insurance companies that, agents that seem to do a very good job for the members. Some members have done exactly what you're implying, is negotiating a separate rate, a fixed rate, you know, on that. We ended up, again, I'll flip my hat back to the old Churchill hat, on our health and accident insurance. We ended up, as our rates went up, their commission went up. When the rates went down, their commission went down. And it was like, I said, dude, this is wrong incentive. You know, we want our rates to go, our health insurance rates to go down, just like we want our pool rates to go down. And if it goes down, there was a reverse incentive. They get paid less. So we said, what is a fair price? And, you know, we did this, I've left Churchill three years ago. We probably did it seven years, about ten years ago. We negotiated with them a fixed contract for, you know, for their services, well, we thought was fair. And then every year, and I'm not sure what's happened the last three years, but there would be an adjustment to that, you know, kind of like a cost of living adjustment, you know, but during budget mitigation, they held it flat, that type of thing. But we did that on the health insurance side of Churchill County. We have seen larger entities within the pool negotiate side agreements. One of the things that we've talked about recently within our, the pool administrative staff is rates went up ten percent, okay, which, not good. But if you're paying a commission based on the total cost, that means your, your commission went up ten, you know, that what you pay also went up ten percent. And to your point, how much additional work was being done. The agents play a very, very valuable role. I was just in Elko two days ago, and the agent over there sits and serves on their safety committee. And Dane does a lot of additional services for the entity and is very actively involved. As a matter of fact, they have, besides the current compensation allowed for the seven percent in the inter-local agreement, they pay him or his company an additional amount for those additional services that he provides. That's an option available. So, you know, there's some entities and some agents that just do a wonderful job. And there are others that, you know, may or may not be meeting expectation. It's a professional service. You're not required to go out to bid. You could do that. You could do a request for proposals. We could provide you some of the main, you know, there's probably four or five company, main companies that do that type of service. But we try to stay away. That's your choice. That's a local, well, you know, Lander County Commission decision, not a PoolPact decision. But what we're looking at is, is there a way that we can structure the compensation that is fair for both, for all concerned? And what we've done on PACT is because our workers' comp program, it's a tiered system that caps out at five thousand dollars because there's not a significant amount of work that is done on the workers' comp side because the interaction is with our third-party claims administrator, Davies, and the employee, okay? So the actual local agent is not involved in those worker type, worker comp type claims, so. And I don't know if Susie was going to see about being online.
Yeah. Like in Sullivan, for the record, I just wanted to speak on what you said, Patsy. We do talk to Hanukkah as far as day-to-day operations. I speak with her all the time. So she does, we are quite involved with them, and she answers questions that we have. And then at the end of the calendar year, we, she sends us all the renewal paperwork, and we go through it together and check and make sure the vehicles that are new for the year are on there. And so we do have a lot of contact with her directly. I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you. So I guess my question is, because I don't ever remember that coming before us to vote on. I mean, we're really on top of it with, with our, our regular health insurance and life insurance, but we aren't with the PoolPact part. And so I, I'm curious, does a PoolPact, does this increase that you pay the commission to the agent?
So it's included in your bill and in that, in that packet.
Okay.
So you pay, we see it two different ways. Some members pay as the total for total program costs, including all services, and some, and then others, and if that happens, then we pay the agent their portion. And if not, some just pay us the pool's portion as one check, a check to the agent as a separate check. So it's two checks. And I honestly don't know.
How have we been doing it?
We pay the full amount, the four hundred ninety-three thousand. We pay that directly to Hanukkah. And then I'm guessing she must...
Then she paid, yeah, she writes a check then to the pool for the, for our part, the program.
Okay, so we actually have the right, under your contract, to negotiate with our own insurance agent.
We do, but I think the difference, and this is just my opinion, is it's a lot of work to change this kind of insurance as far as all the vehicles, equipment, buildings, everything involved in the county. So I think that's probably why it's not a yearly...
I wouldn't doubt it's a lot of work, but we're talking a lot of money.
Yeah.
Are we not?
Yes. I'm just, I wanted to speak on, because you said on our health insurance, we revisit it frequently. I think that's probably the difference.
Okay, well, the value is important, so, and it's good that we're getting, you know, something for our value. But I do think we should make it more competitive. And I do believe we should at least be taking a look at that. If we can actually do something else, especially, I'd love to hear where they said in on some of your other committees and such in Elko. I think that's...
If I'm not mistaken, it has come before this board, hasn't it?
No. I don't ever remember voting...
No, not, not in this form, but this is something that myself...
It has come to this board in the past. I know that. When I, my first term, we visited it.
It was your first term that it actually went into effect. We're talking ten, twelve years ago or more. And when it went into effect, because they had no insurance agents representing PoolPact.
I think you have to look at the way that it's, the contributions split out, and Allen can correct me if I'm wrong, but we'd have to go back and look and see if the agent compensation has increased significantly or if it's the pact that's increasing. Because if you change your agent, that's not going to change your, your pact premium per se. So if the pact's the expensive part...
I'm not just concerned with changing an agent. I'm concerned about a contract that we can negotiate and maybe reduce. I'm looking at saving money. That's based on what they do.
Okay.
Because let's face it, when, when we have all the other questions, you know, outside of the liability on our vehicles and things like that, we go directly to PoolPact. So they don't have that part, but they're still getting a percentage of what we pay. So I think it's something we need to look at. Thank you, Brian.
I think we can certainly construct a contract in Lander County and our agent.
Okay, we'll take a look at it. Thanks, Allen. Appreciate that.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
I was watching under, with all this stuff with the police brutality and all of this stuff, some agencies, law enforcement agencies are working with their insurance companies to do mobilization units that instead of law enforcement, because of the amount of trade... because of the amount of training that's required to deal with emotional issues and mental health issues and things like that, that they are actually sending out almost like an ambulance. And it's, but it's, it has everything to do with an emotional support. And they're the ones who will go out and deal with the, though, when it's not criminal and it's an emotional issue or a mental health issue, they're actually mobilizing and going out and doing this to try to de-escalate anything from happening. And they're finding that that's working very well. And there's, had come up under their insurance company, their ideas with their insurance companies doing that to try to keep costs down and keep, you know, from there being accidental incidents happening. And so I just thought that I would throw that out there as, I thought that was quite interesting because they had stated, since they've been using that, that there, those kind of incidents have gone down hugely. And then, because, you know, that's, there's so much that has to do with mental illness, that that's, you know, on top of everything else, law enforcement has to learn. And then to try to have to deal with that on top of it, it's a lot. So that's why they're doing these mobilization units, almost like I said, either within or aside from the ambulance services. So it kind of de-escalates, and they say it's working well. So have you heard of any agencies that have?
Absolutely. And I'm trying to think, and you might know the, under sheriff or sheriff, the, there's a, I forget what the term is, but I know there are programs in place, Churchill County, City of Fallon, Lyon County have those exact things, they're working on it, and they got some grants from the federal government. And they've been working on it, or, you know, I've left Churchill three years ago. They, they were doing it a couple of years before I, before I left. And you're exactly right, the mental health and, you know, how an officer deals with a person, you know, on a mental health issue, on drugs, those type of things. You know, paranoia, schizophrenic, they're, you know, having specialized training for that in a group. And I'm not, I can't recall, there's, there's an acronym, you know, they have this, this group that addresses that. A team, and usually it's a community, you know, like, like in Fallon, it's a joint deal with the city and the county and the hospital and the mental health facilities, you know. So that, that group gets called in, there's training. We, Pool put on some training this past year, it was virtual. And prior to the pandemic, there was some other training that dealt with mental health awareness. And, you know, we believe that exactly, that this is a trend going forward, that there needs to be some consideration, bless you sir, you know, to help address the mental health. But, you know, law enforcement needs all the tools in the toolkit.
Yeah, because that's, that's huge, I mean, from, you know, that, this, this, on the scheme of things, for mental illness, I mean, you go from something simple to something that's, like you said, schizophrenia. And there's, it's interesting, the little areas, there, there's no way you can give enough training to cover all of that stuff. And they don't know, you know, when they get to the scene and you have this person who's acting out crazy, they don't know, and I don't use, I mean, use the word, but, I mean, they were screaming and yelling, and they don't know that, is it a, a mental issue or is this person just defiant against law enforcement? And so, I, you know, they were saying it was helping hugely in these other areas, especially with the insurance claims and things like that, because law enforcement wasn't even having to be called in because they were dealing with it totally aside from that, so.
And some of that mental health training and how to deal with those issues, I believe there's e-learning courses, I'm sure that they've assigned to their folks. And, and I think the key is, is to develop a partnership with people in, in, in the community. And I think that's one of the challenges for some of the rural communities, and even in, you know, Garrington and Fallon and those type of things, is getting people, qual, mental health counselors and people that are qualified to assist the law enforcement, so that basically law enforcement shows up, stabilizes the scene and kind of passes the torch to the right people, so that they can do, you know, stay in their lane of expertise and, you know, if it's a mental health issue, the type of thing. So, yeah, I think the trend is, is, is that way.
And that's exactly what they said, they can stay in their lane and pass it over. So, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, and you know what, I want to make one, one more point, if I can go back to Patsy Waits' comment on, on the agents and stuff. The pool, every year, we go out to bid, if you will, on the insurance and negotiate with our carriers and our reinsurance companies, you know. So, you know, we, we always work to get the best product and package back to the member agencies. And, you know, your agent is instrumental, as, as Leighton has talked about, is helping to fill out the application, making sure that the, all the vehicles and the equipment and the buildings are on the schedule appropriately, you know, that the risks are identified and the application is completed. It's a, it's a pretty dubious task. And again, going back to e-learning, we developed a, an online tutorial that helps the agent and the members understand how to fill out the renewal application, you know, and it's a 48-minute video. Unfortunately, my mugshot's part of it, because I'm helping with, you know, helped develop that. But the pool has always had a agent, a local agent, since inception, involved in the program. You know, it's, you know, they, they're able to be the feet on the ground, the first point of contact, you know, with the entity. And then, you know, as the entities get more involved in Pool Pack, you know, their comfort level, you know, some things come directly to us, you know, from the members, and we welcome that. But as far as, you know, a fender bender auto claim, you know, a sheriff vehicle got hit by someone who ran a stop sign, you know, your local agent's going to be, help run interference on that claim type of deal and, and do that type of stuff. And a lot of the work they do is behind the scenes, and, you know, staff, staff works with them and understands that. So they do have value. But evaluating it on a regular periodic basis is a good thing. And anytime you can negotiate lower prices, that's always. It's always what us bean counters, the CPA types like to do, is make it more efficient and effective.
I will make a motion that we approve our contract with Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool for the fiscal year 2021, 2022, and the amount not to exceed $493,434.85.
One second. Patsy made the motion, you're our second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you guys very much. When I drive down the highway, I'll remember the name of that program.
Oh, I'm sure. All right. All right, so. Okay. He reached out when we were in the middle of that. No, no worries, you want to reach out before I read it in? Number two? Okay.
Back to the service.
Okay, all right. Moving forward, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove, the termination of the Fallon Air Motive Airport contract and to give the proper notice per current contract.
So on this, I've asked Rick Harless to come speak to some of this. There's nobody that probably knows the operations there better than Rick. So hopefully he can either tell us we're going down the right road, the wrong road, or somewhere in the middle. Morning, Rick.
Morning.
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 Now, when you turn that little button on, please, put it there. Down further, right there, thank you.
So it's Rick Harless.
And just, just for the record, I sent Rick two texts. I asked him, are you available to speak at the commission meeting? I'm not sure if he was fully aware of the, the content of this, but I just wanted it to be as off-the-cuff and as straightforward as it could be.
Rick, so I think what we're, we're faced with here is that, are we going to renew the contract with the current FBO? Or are we going to possibly entertain the idea of taking that task on as our own business and run it as a county? We wanted to hear from your expertise and your viewpoint, having done it for so long.
Okay, well, I'll tell you how we ran it, okay? And we ran it quite differently than Walt does.
Right.
I mean, honestly, Carla and I lived there.
Exactly.
Figuratively.
Yes.
And we were there during the summer, we didn't feel like we could leave because it was so important that it was done and done right. We took it serious, the county paid us a good chunk of money to be there, so we figured that we should be there and we should be responsible. I mean, we paid for everything ourselves, we bought the trucks, we bought all the furniture.
Hey, I'm going to transfer, okay?
I put the, the grass in out there, I took care of the grass. I plowed as needed, you know, with, in conjunction with the county. We took care of leaks at the fuel farm. The trucks were mine, so I took care of all the maintenance on the trucks. You name it, it had to be done out there, if I could do it, I did it. Carla would climb the tower and change the bulb in the rotating beacon, because I was too chicken to climb up there. But she did it, and she did it for 20 years. I did, I changed all the bulbs on the, on the runway. We kept in contact with the FAA on lots of different things. We had a good working relationship with everybody there. And I guess I, I can just say that, you know, we, we really felt like we, we couldn't leave. And especially, that's one reason why we gave it up, is because we felt like we were tied to that. And she says I still am, because I'm continuing to do maintenance out there. But it's hard for me to walk away from maintenance for all of my friends that I've been taking care of their airplane, that are friends with a lot of you too. And because there's no other options, honestly.
Well, Rick, we didn't want to see you go, but we understand why. So it put us in a situation where we had to look for something. And at that point, naturally, our contract came out with Walt. So the concern here now is, because we understand it's certainly different, and we much preferred you at the time, but since we didn't have a choice, what do you think about the county stepping in to do it? I mean, even if we would have done this originally and not gone out, is it something, can, can we actually train enough and, and get enough people, you think, to handle it and do it ourselves? Or is this something that is a bit more complex, that we need to look at, at someone such as Walt? That's, I guess that's our main concern. Because, I mean, even in the Austin area, we've got, we've got a problem because we don't have our gas manned, staffed. So we can't even use the military vehicles that come in and, and the helicopters and just that want to, want to gas up because we can't use their credit card. So Walt has to come in with a huge big gas tank and be there on call to handle that type of thing. And we're going, okay, now we'd have to have somebody from Battle Mountain go down. I mean, there's many things that encompass this that, that make it a little bit more difficult for us. So I guess we kind of want your personal opinion, do you think it's something that the county can tackle and handle?
Before I answer that, let me piggyback off that question, I want you, when you give the answer, think with this too. That was one of my questions that I had asked Walt, was how many hours do you honestly believe that you're at our airport on a monthly basis? And I don't recall the exact number, but it wasn't a lot. So.
No, but his employees were, he was.
Yes, I understand, his employees. So that's the thing, is if, because that was a successful action for you, was you and your wife were there all the time, right?
Yes.
So that's my thought process, if we hire a county employee that has the specialized training, they're there all the time. We build a better facility for the people that do use it, that might, I mean, there's a lot of possibilities. So just think with that data, that, the amount of hours that he spends here himself, the one that said, you know, he's a professional, the one that's licensed to do it all, is not here a whole lot every month.
Right, right, yeah, and, and I know that. And I'm personally a little disappointed with that myself, but, you know, he can run it as he wants. First of all, you know that the county ran it for a while themselves. Back in the airport authority days, they hired people to fuel it and, and run it. And it was not, it was not really successful. Do I think they can? Yes, I do think you can. And it's done at, at many places, but I'll, but I will tell you that it's usually larger place. And what I think you're going to run into here is it's a very fluid operation, particularly because it's a firebase, you know. And you'll think, oh, I'm getting off at 5:00, I've been there till midnight many, 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 many times, doing different things. And, and it's something that you have to keep in mind. So if everybody goes home at 5:00, who's, who's going to fill the gap? It's not very often, but it happens, and it happens a lot. You, you have to remain flexible. And, and I'm telling you, I'll just tell you a horror story, one time, you talk about training, it's super important because there are, there are airplanes that look like they should take jet fuel. And there's airplanes that should take 100 octane, and they're very, very similar. And you got to know what you're talking about, including helicopters, as Bird knows. If you don't know and you put the wrong fuel in, it's an instant crash, instant. You'll get to the end of the runway and you'll take off, and you will come out of the sky with the wrong fuel in an airplane, no question. So I, one time, I had a fairly new guy working for me. And I ran into town, and I went back out, and I turned down the airport road, and I see him standing on a ladder with the fuel nozzle, ready to dip it into a wingtip. And I instantly knew he had the wrong truck going in the wrong airplane. And I started honking at the racetrack. And luckily, he turned around and looked at me, says, what the hell's wrong with you? You know? And I just honked all the way down there, and he stood. And luckily, I caught him before he put any fuel in. Because if that had happened before I got there, and he closed everything up and put the trucks away, I wouldn't have known. And neither would the pilot.
Well, I, I know.
You know, it's, so it's a very serious thing. But can it be done? Yes, it can be done, but it does take a lot of training. And Afuel, who was our dealer, and there are other dealers too, has a training program that they provide to the FBO that people can go through. I think it's a danger to draw somebody off the street and say, go start pumping fuel. Because there's, there's pressure requirements on different airplanes, there, some pilots will tell you to put it in in pounds, some will tell you to put it in in gallons. And, and you have to equalize the load, you can tip an airplane over if you don't put it in correctly. So there's a lot to it. But I suggested to the commission, you know, when we left, that, that maybe you get your own people. But I thought Walt would be a better fit because he knows what he's doing, been up against it.
Well, we appreciate you taking the time to come tell us because we, we know what you did, you know, and for so long, and your commitment, so. Not ready to complain.
If I may, this is Commissioner Clark.
Go ahead, Art.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me, Ken?
I like Brian's idea. I think we can find people and find people to train them.
I, I do have, I've had time to think from our last meeting, and with Walt sitting here in front of us. Rick. Sorry, I was thinking, I was thinking of Walt's, sorry, Rick, I was thinking of Walt's contract. I know that there's, either way, either way the commission goes on deciding if we, we stay with, with Walt or if we come back to county, the contract has to be redone, just to be compliant. But I don't know how, how flexible Rick would be. He spends enough time out there to do some sort of on-call basis to get, get us up and rolling if, if the county wished to go that way, if he would even be willing to consider that. It's a program that he ran long enough, he knows inside and out, upside down. And in the past, there hasn't been a ton of input that came from Rick when, when we built hangars and we did other things, I, I wasn't fully aware of that until recently. I've been brought more apprised of how some of these other things work, but. I, I wasn't fully aware of that until recently. I've been brought more apprised of how some of these other things work, but he's pretty much built our airport, you know, I mean, he's done it all. Why wouldn't we consider at least in the ninety days that, that we have to, to get out of this contract, um, putting something out there and seeing if we, and I, and I don't know, I haven't, I haven't said a word to, I haven't said a word yet other than right now. So, it's, it's just something I'm throwing out there for food for thought, to see, see what we might be able to do, if that's the route this commission wants to go.
Well, that was one of my ideas, and that's, I was willing to bring it up, is could we potentially hire Rick as a consultant to help us through that transition period, you know? Or possibly, cause if we did bring, if we were to hire him as a consultant, he could help train, he could, you know, there's certain things that he could do that wouldn't require a whole lot of his time, but would cover us in those important things that need to be done. You, you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
I, I have a vested interest in that. I mean, I still own hangars there and I still do maintenance, which I plan on doing for quite some time, you know? And, um, so I want the airport to succeed. I want it. It's being used for the absolute best possible thing this airport can ever be used for right now, and that's the aerial firefight. You know? Can you expand that? If you, if you lengthen the runway, you probably can. But, uh, that's gonna be some infrastructure there. But I, I would be willing to help or at least entertain helping, um, in any way I can, and I, I've offered that forever. I, I want success out there. I like it out there. So, I'm, I'm willing to help in any way I can. And we can talk about that. Okay?
Thank you.
What would be the timeline on, um, training somebody to, for like your fueling and?
Well, you know, that's an interesting question because, uh, most of it you'll say is on-the-job training. Well, if you hire somebody in the winter, you're gonna be training them for six months because the winter is, in this airport is the loneliest place in the West. And in, and in the summer, it can be the busiest place in the West. It just, and one day it's super busy, a week, there's nothing. But that's what makes it so unique is, this is the most unique. I've worked at several different airports too. I was in the Air National Guard and, you know, things were different, you know? Um, but this is the most unique airport I've, I, I know of.
The, the current employees that are out there now that work for Walt, are they local people?
Yeah.
So, I mean, if we were to take it over our own, I'm sure they'd want to continue.
I'm sure they would.
Working there.
Yeah. Yeah, so answer your question, JR. It, it depends. Um, that's why I, it, I just hated hiring somebody in the winter, cause you couldn't get them trained. And my brother used to come in, if we ever left for a vacation or something, my brother, who is very experienced with aviation too, would come and fill in for us while we were gone. That's how serious I took it.
All right, thank you for Rick. Rick, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Uh, how long was Wayne Evans out there?
Just a few years. I mean, Wayne taught, uh, flying lessons there for quite some time. Uh, and then he had the FBO just for, uh, less than five years, I believe.
Okay. Um, are there any schools that you can send people to? For training?
I don't know of any, or, all, what I said was the, uh, the video courses that your fuel supplier um, supplies is, is the closest thing to that that I know of. We, we.
You, you said that you have vested interest and you wanna see this thing work? Are you willing to work with the county to make it work?
To, to some degree, yes. I mean, it depends on what you want. Yeah, I, I do.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm with Brian on this.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Uh, legally, this contract expires on, if, uh, no notice is given in twenty twenty-six. It was a ten-year contract. Uh, there is a early termination clause of ninety days minimum. That is minimum. You can give six months notice, you can give a year's notice, but you have to give at least ninety days. So you have options if you choose to go in that.
But it has to be redone anyway, correct Ted, because of the length of the contract regardless? Is that right? Cause of the language of it?
Uh, it, it should be, yeah, it should be. It never should have gone for ten years.
Okay, Ted, in the scenario though, let's just say that we gave them, um, a year's notice. Um, that we're gonna take everything over ourselves next May. Then he can turn around and not accept that and give us a termination notice in the middle, right?
That's right.
Yes, he can turn around and give us ninety days.
Which could catch us then, even if we gave more than the ninety. Okay, thank you.
Right.
Can I just offer a suggestion?
Yes, please.
That if you're going to take it over, make sure you get some people in there to start training during the summer. And that's what we did when Walt took over. Uh, we knew that he was taking over a month or two months before he actually did. And, uh, we said, if you wanna put some people in here, we'll train them before you actually take over, and that's what we did. Same, same scenario, you know? Just don't get caught on the last day with new people. But, you know, you have experienced people out there, so may, maybe they'll come on.
Maybe we ought to find out if they wanna continue working there for the county.
I'm sure they would, but I don't know that for a fact.
I think when we do, um, when we do Austin though, they come in from Fallon, I do believe.
Uh, probably.
David Meyer of J U B for the record. Um, I haven't had any official conversations with the people at Battle Mountain, but I would almost assure you that they would have interest in continuing with the county. You know, they're very knowledgeable in what they do. You know, uh, Diane and Pam are kind of the two that run the office and, you know, they're the people that, when Rick talks about knowing which plane needs which fuel and how much pounds and balancing and all of that, they're the people actually out there fueling the planes. They have that knowledge. They've been doing it for a while. So, and when they come from Austin, it was previously Brandon, um, who worked at the Battle Mountain FBO who would drive one of the county's trucks down there, and he would fuel from the truck so that he could process the, the military's card by hand so that he could apply the proper discounts, cause that's the concern, of course, with the card reader.
Thank you.
Is that it can't be programmed that we know of, and we've explored this, you know, exhaustively. It can't be programmed to recognize a government card and provide discounts. So, um, all of that stuff for the county was being handled, uh, by the FBO through their Battle Mountain office. Brandon, I believe, is no longer with the FBO. Think he's working for the Mayans, but.
Thank you.
Could be done again.
Well, maybe we could, just in moving forward, we could, uh, direct our county manager to reach out to Walt to see if he'd be willing to, like you say, give a year's notice type of a thing and that, to see what his appetite for that would be before we plan our next move.
I, I think that would be wise, um, or, or I just hate to see us move in the middle and, and do it so quickly. And we've got so many things that we are changing with the county right now and doing it.
And we're coming right into fire season.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, well, like I said, that the ninety days doesn't take care of the fire season. It doesn't. And so I, I, I think it's fine to reach out to Walt to see if we could. But I, I really don't want us to take any action to change it right now. I just think it's something we should be looking at and grow towards. And next year, you know, we'll be, have more ducks in, in a better row.
Is Walt on the line?
Walt, are you on the line?
Walt? No, maybe not. Um, I would suggest that we don't do a one year, that puts us exactly back in the same shoes that we're in right now as far as fire season and everything like that. If we're gonna do it, let's, let's do somewhere the transition somewhere.
Like the end of some, or the.
Yeah, and I don't know, maybe Rick can speak to that better, but maybe, you know, we can get, if the county is gonna do this, like Rick said, bring somebody in there that can get some summer training and then transition them over. And I don't know what the best way to make that transition between the summer training and the, and taking over, not in the middle of a fire season. It's kinda, you know, they're kinda contradicting there.
But if we don't take any action right now at all today, everything stays the same. We can do our investigating in the meantime, and we can always give a ninety-day notice, whether it's in February or whatever, when you're ready. But, um, I, I just assume leave everything just the way it is and let us do our research and get ready to do and take it over properly. I really do. I don't wanna see it done this summer.
What do you think about that, Bert? Yeah, I mean, we can, we can do it however you guys, however you guys want. The, uh, you know, getting, getting the jobs advertised and the training and everything like that, we, we have a little bit of work to do. But, um, the key, the key ingredient to this whole thing is Rick, and if he's willing to work with us, that, I mean.
No, I agree. I think, I, I agree with Patsy on that. Maybe we just don't do anything and just get through the fire season. And then in the meantime, we can be doing, uh, we can direct Bert to work with, uh, uh, Rick and, uh, just come up with a plan. Cause of ninety days out, I mean, that's something we can, we can use at any time.
If you get to a certain point, as I experienced when we were leaving, um, you stay during the winter and then you're gone in the summer. You don't make any money in the winter in this business out there. So, the appetite to stay through the winter and miss the fire season. I didn't really think that out that well last time. But, you know, you, you honestly, this is so different, winter, summer. It's just incredible.
I think to speak to that, um, I think you're right. I think based on how the contract's set up and where the money is made, I would just keep, you know, an ongoing conversation with Walt. On, you know, cause he's not gonna, I, and not to speak for him at all, but I would expect that, you know, he would wanna stick around through fire season. It's just about to start. You know, even if there was a ninety days, you know, he would be willing to work, but, uh, or work with the county. But he may not wanna stick around until February.
Right.
And he's taking basically his payment from the county and just handing it to his employees and not making any money on fuel, so. Again, not to speak for him, that would be a conversation, I guess, to have with him, but, uh, the seasonal nature of the airport, the extreme seasonal nature of the airport is such that the money out there for an FBO is made in three or four months, not over twelve months.
I mean, with any business, I mean, if we were to take it over, you look at ways you can, you know, capitalize or, you know, you, we could make money. I mean, if, if we hired the right person, could, as a county, could we give flight instruction, you know, teach people how to fly? I mean, can you fly during the winter? I mean, there's.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, just, just things like that, like what could we do to help it self-sustain and where you could make money through the winter as opposed to what is doing that?
Well, and the other thing to think about out there in terms of the off-season is, that's a big swatch of land, you know? To have a county employee out there that could mow, to have a county employee out there that could fix lights, you know? They could help do those things just to keep it maintained when things are slow. Plow in the winter.
That's a big, that's a big.
Yeah, have a county employee that can speak for the county, cause that, there's always that disconnect when you have that private employer is, you know? Uh, the FBO is very good about coordinating with, you know, the county on their needs, coordinating with, uh, Fred Wagner with Amped Out Electric if they have electrical issues. But at the end, they don't have the authority of the county, uh, to direct anybody to do anything that ultimately end up being billed to the county. And so, having someone out there through those slow months that has that authority, that has the equipment, that has the training, would keep people from just sitting around in their hands, on their hands, cause that's what happens. That's what's happening now with no fires busted.
And I think I had asked you a question last year, what would it take, uh, to, and you don't have to answer it now, I just wanna jog your memories, like, to make it somewhat of a commercial airport to where we have an airline here similar to what they do in Elko, to where people wouldn't have to go to El- I mean, with all the mining and stuff that we do here, that we just go right there, we hop on a SkyWest and, you know, what, what, what would that look like?
Yeah, that would be getting, you know, if that was the county, the direction the county wanted to go, that would be looking at a planning firm that specifically works with those airlines to make that happen. We had sent some information. I think we talked, yeah, it must have been last year, cause we sent some information to the county manager at that time to keep.
That's a huge deal, Brian.
But that is.
You have to cha- you have to change the category of the airport to one thirty, one thirty-nine.
Yeah.
One thirty-nine, part one thirty-nine, which requires a lot.
Security.
Of different things, fencing, security.
I think.
You name it. It's, it's a big deal.
It's, it's the kind of thing where if you have the appetite to do it, you gotta have the long vision to get it done. Cause you could invest a lot of money and, and have them, have an air, airplane not, or airline not come in.
Well, maybe your next update you do give to the commission, maybe you can speak on that, cause there is a couple of community members that, they have a, they wanted me to look into it, they had an interest, and I can have them here and they can ask questions and, you know?
Yeah.
Cause I told them, I, I don't know what's entailed. I mean, I wouldn't know.
And that is a very specialized part of aviation. I'll speak broadly to what I can and try to do some information, you know, some digging. There are, uh, there are, uh, airports have done it. There are a couple airports where they don't actually have full part one thirty-nine, they don't have a TSA, but, um, there's some pretty major limitations on what you can.
I get it. Thank you.
So, so one other thing that somebody's gotta pay attention to, like in the winter, i- is that if it snows in the middle of the night and it leaves, leaves a dangerous amount of snow on the runway, somebody's gotta get out there and turn the runway lights out, somebody's got to, uh, put a NOTAM out, get somebody to plow. I've actually gone out there and plowed enough with my Baco so that the Medicare could land before. Cause I'm just anal enough that I had a radio at my house, you know, and so I was answering the radio in the middle of the night too. And if you're, if you allow the snow to accumulate on the runway and the runway lights come on and there's no, no warning through a NOTAM or on the AWAST recording and somebody lands in it, you're gonna be liable. It's, there, there's, there really is a lot to it.
Just, just so you guys know, right now, the county is the one who's going out there plowing when that happens right now. It's not, the, the service, and I don't mean this underhandedly, but the service is not the same as it was. There's, there's a different level of service from the different operators that we have, just because of the boots on the ground. And my vision on this whole thing, if the county's gonna take this over, is, you know, I'm looking at Austin Airport Advisory Board's agenda. They have ten items on there. It'd be nice if the county had an individual that went down, sat through them meetings, said, oh, this is, these are the things of importance that we need to, and then they could come back here and sit in front of this board and, and make recommendations. We can make budget recommendations. We can, we can improve everything, like I said, having a, a full-time pilot's lounge out here like they do in Austin. Um, where people do stop and, and they wanna go take a quick nap on the couch, they can get into the pilot's lounge, you know, after hours. Um, but I would like to address that as, as a, as a whole. But we aren't talking about the same level of service we had in the past. That's just, that's just the cut and dry of it.
Well, I would say that we just probably continue in the direction we're going and then we'll work in a direction where we're more set up for, and then where we feel that we can say, you know, ninety days. I think, that's.
May- maybe we could give notice if, if this is the direction the commission wants, around October or something, where, you know, the ninety days puts us, then we have a, a period of time if the same people don't put in, that we can, you know, start putting them through some of the trainings that, and, uh, and in that time, it'll, it'll give me and Rick enough time to figure something out that, that's palatable for him and.
I have another question. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, um, it's my understanding that we don't have fuel for high-altitude aircraft. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct.
Well, how come, how come jets have to go to Winamaka to get high-altitude fuel and then fly back to Battle Mountain?
I've never in my life heard of a high-altitude fuel. Uh, the only thing that you, that you might be referring to is an anti-icing additive that some aircraft requ- uh, require. It's called PIST. Or, um, there's another name for it, but, but anyway, it's an anti-icing that only certain aircraft require. And we. but anyway, it's an anti-icing that only certain aircraft require, and we provided it. I don't know whether Walt provides it or not.
He still does.
It's, it's my understanding, Rick, that it's not provided. I went out there when the Osprey was there, and uh, a jet landed, and I talked to somebody working there, and they told me that the jet landed in Battle Mountain, a limousine picked up the doctors and took them to Elko, and then the jet went to Winamaka to get fuel to come back to Battle Mountains to pick up the doctors, because we don't carry the high altitude fuel. Um, and it's cheaper for people to land in Battle Mountain than to land in Elko, so. You have a rate issue too?
There, there, there is no high altitude fuel, I can tell you that. There's only a requirement for certain airplanes, and Mitsubishi and uh, is one of them, that requires PIST uh, as an additive, and it's just an anti-icing uh, additive that, that you can put in with a spray can as you fuel. Uh, I would be shocked if Walt doesn't have that out there.
He, he has it out there. We, we fuel up with it regularly. It, it's in the fuel, so that's, that's misinformation.
Yeah, that's, there, there's no special fuel, Art.
And, I'm just, I'm just going by what the gal told me and the reason why the jet left, so.
Maybe that was their polite way of saying, I'm gonna go where the fuel's cheaper.
So, what are we going to do?
Nothing.
I'll bring this back to you guys after the summer.
Rick, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Rick. Appreciate it.
So, we're gonna take a ten minute break?
Muted. This conference will now be recorded. Unmuted.
Move forward. So, staff update to the Lander County Commission on the, on the status of the Battle Mountain Grammar School, also known as the Lander County Old Courthouse, being designated a hysterical, his- historical building, a discussion and possible action on how to proceed as a result of the designation to either overturn the historical building status or to retroactive approval and adopt the application. Finally, in, in either event, to appoint a person or persons to supervise or spearhead the plan moving forward made by, and approved by the Lander County Board of Commissions.
Okay, my name's Amy Nelson, and my purpose here is to very quickly, because I see you have twenty-one items on your agenda, give you a quick history of where we started and where we are now, and then launch it, I'm gonna go sit down, because then it becomes your guys' baby. Am I doing it right? Wake up, wakey, wakey?
It's gonna be to your back, behind you.
Oh, okay, just tell me when it's ready. Do you have to go into presentation mode over here or something like that? There you go, that's up there now. Now, is this still gonna work? Okay, like I said, I'm gonna talk quickly, we're just, you guys have to be fast readers, if you can see that far away. History architect, I'm gonna talk a little bit about that, the restoration plan, and, and why. Oh, now it's not going to let me move. Okay, perfect. History. Uh, most of you know that Frederick de Longchamps was the architect, quite famous. He um, was involved with the Reno courthouse and a lot of courthouses all over the, the state. It's, as most of you have been through there, it has been tweaked quite a bit, but there's still a lot of beautiful historical uh, pieces to our courthouse. Again, I'm doing this quickly, so if anybody's interested in historical buff, I can send this to you. Um, it started out as a school, the old grammar school, a lot of the folks that are maybe in their fifties, sixties, no, not fifties, I'm in my fifties. Let's go seventies and eighties, went to school there. Dang, I'm getting old. It was a grammar school till nineteen sixty-five, and then it, uh, we started building new schools. And then in nineteen seventy-nine, when the county was moved to um, from Austin to Battle Mountain, then it reopened as the courthouse. And um, we'll talk a little bit about that later. The architect, again, he was born in Reno, he's a Nevada, native Nevadan. Um, and then he went to Reno High School, was schooled at the University of Nevada, and as I said, he was quite prolific in his construction throughout the, the state. Somewhere in here, I believe, at the very bottom, the very last uh, paragraph or sentence, talks about, he had over five hundred buildings in Nevada that he um, designed and helped build. He does have a monument in, in Reno, in Washoe County. Restoration plan, this is where we wanna spend a little more time. As you know, actually, prior to maybe involved, the county hired Mel Green, and I believe you guys have somewhere, and I do have it on soft copy if anybody wants this sent. He did a huge structural analysis, cause he's a structural engineer, and basically broke it down to every little piece of the building, what needs to be fixed, how it needs to be fixed, recommendations on which direction to go in, where to start, and essentially deemed it to be structurally sound, but in need of some work. Just old bones. Um, but he did, he shows in here, it's a wonderful book. He shows the original design and, and how you can restore, like, the entryway, and then the stairs going up, and how it used to have all that beautiful architecture. What's happening? Is it moving? Oh, it's not moving. I'm staring at this and you guys aren't seeing it. Thanks for letting me know. I've got some cool pictures in there. Wonder if I put it on the desktop? No, don't log out. Let me drag it to the desktop maybe and see. Okay. Did you see any of those?
No.
Okay, let me just flip back just to show you cool pictures. Oh, there's really not that many good pictures yet. Never mind, you didn't miss much. That's him. That's the plaque. There's a cool old picture. Okay, so, and two thousand, now you guys can see what I'm talking about. In two thousand sixteen, Melvin Green completed the um, historic and condition assessment report. He is a structural engineer. In two thousand sixteen, we had public meetings, and most of you may remember, we had them at the um, Civic Center, large group came. Um, a lot of feedback from the community. Uh, right after that, we formed the Lander County Committee for Historical Preservation. We kept it neutral, we didn't want it to just target this, because there's all, there are several historical buildings in town. We kinda wanna do what Patsy and Jan Morrison and some of those folks did in Austin, and really start preserving our, our history. Um, in two thousand nineteen, it was placed on the register of historic places. What that did is it didn't limit us to construction, it just protects it from being torn down. It doesn't really limit what we do within it. And then it took a while to get the nonprofit status. We started that in two thousand seventeen, and I don't know if it was just, I don't, we had a couple of glitches with attorneys, and then with coronavirus, it delayed it quite a bit, but we finally did get that nonprofit status, which will help with grants. You really can't do much until you have that. And then we um, are, here we are now. Restoration. There was some work done between two thousand sixteen and, I'm gonna say two thousand nineteen, right before coronavirus. We uh, worked with Catherine Wines, I don't know if you know her, but she's a architect out of Elko, who's done some, there's one picture right down here on the bottom, where she took the old electric building and, and just created that facade on the front that makes it look so historical, and restored it back to what it originally was designed as. So she, that's her main focus, is historical restoration of buildings. The building that she currently has in Elko, it's on the corner, right behind the commercial, and it's absolutely beautiful. If you get a chance to go in it, it's, it's just breathtaking what she's done to restore it. Um, so she's our architect of choice, who's been working with us. I call her all the time, ask her questions, or I did, um, up until, like I said, the last year or so. Um, restoration, according to Mel Green and Catherine, who's walked through the building several times with us, there's a lot of easy, short, quick wins. One of them, the one that both of them agreed on was the front entrance, bringing it back to its old glory. The very top of it is al- is already historical, but then you would, you would open up the front entrance, and then a lot of just lost cosmetic things, like the furnaces. If any of you've ever been to the grammar school in Winamaka, they, they have the same furnaces, and they just, they're beautiful. And they, you know, paint them and restore them or do whatever they do. And then just little things in each of the rooms, taking off the wood paneling and, and bringing it back to original design. Um, in this book are the maps of the restoration steps, and of course, um, the has, ext- external restoration, internal, and then uh, they talked about the structural piece. It's all in there. So here's kinda where it goes back to you guys. I've talked a little bit with Bert, a little bit with Kathy. Um, some elements of the restoration project are a challenge. They're going to be a little bit more expensive, and they're gonna need expertise beyond me, cause I literally have no expertise in anything. Um, I just care about old buildings and I think they're beautiful. Um, so that's where we've been doing a lot of talk about, this is now, you know, over our head and around the corner. And so we're asking for some support, preserving our heritage. We took a couple of pictures off of um, around town, some of the beautiful historical buildings that we currently have. There's more than this. But they're beautiful, and they get people to pull off the road to look at them. And um, the county courthouse is right in the middle of town. It would be a beautiful centerpiece for all kinds of activities. And uh, the reason that we were so passionate about making sure it was protected historically, is because once it's gone, it's gone. Some of us, like me, I'm old, I remember the depot that used to be right downtown, we used to play in it when we were kids, and it's gone now. And I, most of you've been through Love Lock and saw what Persian County did with theirs, and it's just, it's, that's the kinda thing we don't wanna do, is lose our, our history. Um, I was working with Kyla for a little while. Again, it was a year or so ago, about that Main Street project, because there is funding available, but again, over my pay grade at this point, but you know, you can look at your, the downtown properties all have huge potential around here, and you know, when you drive through towns that have, even though it's just a facade, you still walk in and it's the grocery store, but the outside looks historical. It's just quaint, and it makes people wanna pull into town. And it gives us pride. Um, I've been working a little bit with Kathy, Joe Hawley, who worked, who's, you know, the tribal, he's the liaison with several of the mines in town. The Heckler Mining has worked, has contacted Joe Hawley, and they're willing to pay his salary, you know, it wouldn't be a lot, but they're willing to pay to have him participate in the work with the Native Americans, getting all of the Lander County Native American artifacts out of the University of Nevada, back to Nevada, and put into the, the county, or, or someplace. But that's just information. There is a passion for people to bring their, their history back to the communities. So that was exciting to hear that. And then we just talked about community pride and use. I just like these old pictures. I got a bunch of them at my house. They're cool. To consider that that's what it used to look like, and how fun it would be to bring some of that, some of that heritage back. And then some ideas that we bounced around, this is a letter from Ron Unger from several years ago. He actually helped us get our nonprofit status and helped us with our, uh, no, the preservation piece. This was for the preservation piece. We needed two or three people in the county to talk about how important it was, and did you, you didn't go to school there, you're not that old, are you?
Well, yes and no.
Okay.
No, I did go to school, yes, I did go to school, but no, I'm not that old.
Yeah, you're not that old. But he, I, I think it was Ted. Ted also wrote a letter. One of them had some history there. Maybe they just were kindergartners, or maybe they went to a, a function there. Um, but there's, we talked about the art exhibits and the Native American artifacts. Uh, possibilities for GBC to relocate there, how wonderful, and, you know, kids like to go take classes at the university, at the community college, and right now, you know, you walk down, what is that, North Second, a couple of dogs attack you, and it's a little scary, and there's no lighting. Do you know, I, I live right there. I walk down over there. Uh, so it would be wonderful to have something in the center of town. Office spaces, county library, when I was growing up, that's where the library was. I was practically lived there as a kid. And, or meeting rooms, there's a lot of potential. It's a beautiful place. And then, um, that's it. So, that's the history, that's where we are. I'm excited that you guys are excited about this. I have lots of information if you wanna see the, see any of it at your convenience. And any questions for me, or I'll go sit back down?
Thank you for doing all that.
You bet.
Thank you, Amy. I do have a question, actually, on the agenda, the way it's written, that you're thinking to overturn the historical building status, or to retroactively approve and adopt the application, and I, I don't understand.
So, I think that, and that is because of the way that it was signed. It was, I believe that Keith had signed that. I don't know that it came before the board and had board approval. So, what we're looking for is board approval for that adoption, and then we can uh, either move forward with it, to make sure it is properly adopted?
Yeah, you're talking about being a historical site?
Correct.
We are a historical site, are we not?
Well, yes and no. We, we are with an improper signature.
Okay, so you, we'll put it on the next agenda?
Yes, we just need direction moving forward, so we can put that on, or, um, and also put somebody in charge of, of kinda spearheading how we're gonna move forward, because we cannot give Amy's five oh one C the money directly to put into that building. And maybe Ted can speak more to how that works. I think that, that'd be better coming from legal than from me.
Okay, well, it just means how we have to put the, how we have to put it on the agenda next time, that's all.
Well, it's on the agenda now. It's on the agenda now, for you to uh, to uh,
Adopt.
Retroactively approve and adopt the application for a historical site. It can be signed on its own with that authority of the county commissioner.
Okay, so we just put it on the next agenda to do that?
No, no, I think he's saying that it's on here.
No, not, no, there's not an action item. It's not an action item. We can't do anything.
Yes, it is.
It is an action item.
Discussion and possible action on how to proceed.
Mine doesn't say that.
Yes, it does. A little further down.
Of course it does.
Staff update. Discussion and possible action on how to proceed. We don't, don't we have to have action on the front? I thought we had to have action on the very first one.
No.
For discussion and possible action. Okay, cool. If we can, good.
So, to continue, uh, we have, Keith signed it on his own as the owner of the building for the county. So we have to retroactively adopt what he did, if, if that's what the county wants to do. At that point, it's a tech building built, uh, that's been designated as, um, as historic site. Therefore, the county has to decide how to proceed, and who is going to spearhead that. Now, when the county appoints some, and it should be somebody from the county. But they, they can certainly use Amy and her husband, uh, to do this, and at some point in time, perhaps tie the proper one C three into it, but that, that's gonna take some uh, legal maneuvering, depending on the county's wishes today. That's why we structured it the way it is structured on the agenda.
So, Ted, this is Kathy. So, are there any limitations in leaving it as a, a historical?
More advantages than limitations, I think.
Well, there, there are advantages and disadvantages. The disadvantages is that we have to maintain the historical facade. And uh, Pat- Patsy's aware of that. And uh, advantage is that uh, like Amy pointed out, it would uh, it preserves a historical site, whether it's designated as such or not, and we can't demolish the building. We can only preserve the facade, and then decide how we wanna proceed.
So, within the motion, it has to have retro- uh, retroactively approved?
Yes. So I would suggest, what I would suggest and recommend, is that if the county wants it to continue with the is that if the county wants it to continue with the status of the thing to, to make a motion to retroactively, uh, take action and retroactively, uh, like it says in here, uh, approve and adopt the application where it was made. And then in another motion to appoint a county person, the persons that work for the county to, uh, supervise or spearhead a plan moving forward. And three, if you're not ready with a plan, or if, if, uh, once you approach a person, you can always have them come back to the county's position up with some ideas and with, uh, Amy and her husband after discussion with them. Then you can approve a plan moving forward. So the original plan moving forward is appointing somebody to be in charge of it and come up with ideas. And that's what agenda, agenda is in that thing. Does that answer all your questions?
For me, it did. So do we have a motion to either, to, to, can we approve it, the application?
I couldn't hear Ted, so. You couldn't either?
The, uh, the first, the first thing is to.
You can make a motion.
I can, okay.
Absolutely you can.
All right. Very good. So I'll make the motion that, um, we retroactively approve and adopt the application for the, um, old courthouse, also known as the Battle Mountain Grammar School. That was, uh, um, filed, I guess, and signed by Keith Weston Guard on twelve, three of two thousand eighteen.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Will you add designated a historical building?
Oh, designating it as a historical building.
And I'll second that amended motion.
Now, don't they have, if they wanna appoint someone, should it be in their motion?
No, they do that by separate motion.
So, um, Kathy, I made a motion, um, Brian second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. So now for the second motion of either, make sure I get this right. Either appointing someone or getting, how I'll do this, or either getting with Amy and those guys and bringing back recommendations. Correct?
You need to appoint somebody from the county.
Okay, so.
So Amy, are, are you okay with that?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
So are we okay, uh, appointing Amy or does it have to be somebody who works for the county?
Has to be a county.
Employee.
It has to be a, it's a county building, Kathy.
Okay, well, I'm just making sure. So, um.
So we have to appoint somebody from the county to work with Amy instead of?
Well, they don't have to work with Amy if, if you don't choose, or you can choose to do that. But you need to put somebody in the county and charge.
So we can, uh, we can just give Bert direction to appoint one of his staff to work with Amy?
Or work directly with.
Or direct, or work directly with Amy, right?
Then we'll bring everything back to the board. That'd be simple enough.
Will that work that way, Ted?
That'll work. I, I would suggest you get some legal and from, uh, from Bert's office to, uh, to work together with, uh, Amy and those people. I, I, I suggest you appoint Bert and myself. This is what I'm saying.
All right. So I, we'll make the motion to appoint Bert and, uh, Ted to work with Amy on moving forward with this build, this historical building. Is that correct? Does that work?
That'll work.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
And to bring back recommendations to the board.
And bring back the recommendations to the board.
I'll second.
All right, so Kathy made the motion. Brian second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Can, can we move to item ten? I, I'll apologize to Sadie in advance, but some of these items have went on longer.
Yes. So we're gonna go ahead and.
Number ten?
Number ten? All right. So jumping forward, uh, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove, placing a mural, um, at the Lander County Recreation Center. So here on.
Good morning, Sarah Edgar for the record. Uh, thanks for moving the agenda items around to accommodate my other commitments for the day. Um, just a little background on the project. Um, Barrick Leadership was at a function in two thousand twenty and met a couple of the artists that were welcoming into our town, um, with an organization called Art We Bare Yet. Um, I gave a little bit of supplemental information. Uh, they're, they're traveling around, uh, the Americas and doing a project via small videos, uh, photography, art, um, painting murals in underserved communities. Um, the Barrick Leadership really appreciated their platform and their work and their project. And they invited them to Elko, uh, to do a couple of murals at the Igloo Rec Center. And I do have a couple of photographs for you guys to reference. Um, they liked it so much, uh, they, they wanna bring them to Battle Mountain. Um, thank you to Bert for the sense of urgency on the, the short, um, timeframe that we had once I came into the position. Um, but yeah, we, uh, we, we decided, uh, to potentially put it at the rec center on the east wall, just past the entrance near the restrooms. There's some mock-up art. Uh, the idea that I gave to the artists to present the mock-up was we're a very patriotic community that likes the outdoors. Um, and I think they kind of nailed it with the picture, uh, that they, that they're presenting for us. Um, their arrival, their arrival time is around June twenty fifth. Depending on how much, uh, volunteerism we have within the community, um, they, they'll be here about a week. If they get full volunteerism and their schedule's pretty full, it might be a shorter timeframe. Uh, but what, what we're asking is, uh, for the commission to approve the art mock-up, approve the location. Um, there's, there's two pictures in the mock-up art, one with the restroom signs in place where they're at. Um, with the, or moves to the outside of the doors. And, um, one with them where they're at right now. So we're asking that we can move the restroom signs to the outside of the doors to maximize the capacity for the, the artwork. And allow the artists, 'cause they travel all over in their bus, um, and asked if they could plug into the water and sewer at the rec center. So they have all the supplies right there, um, for the project.
Awesome. I think it's awesome.
Very good. It's beautiful.
Really cool.
I think so too. I think with the little guidance that I got from community members and, and the, the highlights that I gave to them, uh, it's, it's, it's great artwork.
Yeah, did I miss a little mining truck down in the bottom or anything? It's, no?
Nope. Nope.
I like it how it is.
It's beautiful.
Beautiful.
Yeah.
You got the right species of fish on there, fish on there.
Well, I actually sent them the, um, the county seal as well. So you, you might see some similarities between the, the mock-up and, and what really represents our county, so.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve placing a mural at the Lander County Recreation Center.
I'll second.
Um, do we have to say where?
I would say in the location and approving, moving the, um, bathroom signs. Cause they wanna move bathroom signs.
Yeah, I have the, the items that, that we're asking for.
I'll amend my motion to state what we just presented there.
All right, then I'll second.
Commissioners, excuse me, is there any cost or contracts involved in this?
Not for this.
Not for the county, Sarah stated.
Who's paying for it?
Nevada Gold Mines.
Nevada Gold Mines.
Okay, uh, all right. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, um, I'll second one, amended one. So Brian made the motion, Kathy second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I want to get clarification for them being able to plug in.
Oh, and clarification?
Yes.
For them to plug in. It's okay for them to plug in.
Yeah, do I have to make that part of my motion? Okay.
No.
No, you can do it separate.
Yeah, you're good.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you guys so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Have a great day.
Yep.
Thank you and congratulations on your new.
Thank you so much.
All right, we're, um, Brian's asked that we move to number seventeen.
Seventeen.
Well, we can go back to four.
Oh, there's something that needs to get back to.
I apologize.
So, uh, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove, a road, a street or easement abandonment application for Drill Tech Drilling, uh, Drilling and Shoring Incorporated, INC. For abandonment of a portion of the North First Street located within the southwest one quarter of section seventeen, T three two N, comma, R four five E. This was approved by the Planning Commission on May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one with no conditions or restrictions. All right.
Morning.
Morning.
Donnie, you've walked a property with Mike?
Yes, yes. Me and, uh, the water department, we're gonna go to make sure there's no, no conflicts, no, no lines or anything there. And check the maps and they should be clear. We're walking them out.
And there, um, let me see here if I, this, let me see, make sure I look at this right here. And there's no issue with the railroad? No issue with the railroad?
So it'll just be past the power company?
No, it's right.
Yeah, it's right here. There's that building.
Where First Street ends?
This is the building Garner used to have.
Mm-hmm.
That's where they're at now. This is a piece of property right here.
It's just the easement, right?
Just the easement, correct?
Just the easement, right?
No questions? I'll make a motion that we approve a road, uh, street or easement abandonment app, uh, application for Drill Tech Drilling and Shoring, uh, Incorporated uh, for abandonment of a portion of North First Street located within the southwest quarter of section seventeen T thirty-two North, R forty-five East. This was approved by Planning Commission on May nineteenth with no condition.
Brian, could you include, could you include having the chair sign the, uh, order regarding abandonment and future ownership after my office, uh, does that, the, uh, does that, that order?
I'll amend my motion to reflect what, uh, our district's attorney stated.
So the second?
I'll second the motion.
Brian made the motion, Kathy second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thanks for waiting.
Is it gonna be using that easement? They're gonna have those oversized big trucks, right, on the roads? That we have in plan, does that road, is North Second is road for big semis, right?
Just to access it from Second Street.
So you won't have to be replacing that road that goes around back to that section, right?
There won't be any catwalk on First Street.
For discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove, setting in June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one as the date for the Lander County Astro Plan Workshop. And to decide whether to set this, uh, as a special meeting so all commissioners may attend, to approve invitations to attend for representatives of the following boards. Lander County, one, Lander County Economic Development Authority, L I D A. Two, Lander County Planning Commission. To further request, Wood Rogers, Lander County District Attorney, Lander County Planning and Zoning Department, and Lander County Assessor, and any other elected official or board members, um, this commission decides.
Now, Art has requested that we, uh, maybe move this a little further down the line. And I, I have to agree because I would like everybody to have these packets in hand and have a chance to review them with a little more notice than what we have right now, so. If, uh, if we wanna maybe bump that out one month or I can put it back on with the proper date, um, might be effective. I do have to, um, get ahold of Wood Rogers and see what dates work for them. I apologize. Table it.
Table it? So for discussion of possible action for this board to approve, disapprove, allowing five G within Lander County. Speakers will be present to argue the pros and cons of five G service.
So we do not have the, uh, the cons here or the pros, but we have the pro and con here. Um, Mr. David, he's gonna give us a, a brief overview and then maybe we can bring this back, um, after we get some more information, 'cause there's a ton of information out there.
Uh, my name's David Piesner with Sky Fiber. And I'm neither a medical professional nor a engineer, but I have had it explained to me the difference of what we're talking about. Five G is basically a classification of the next generation of technology. There's multiple forms. Uh, cellular, cellular is one aspect. Um, directional antenna is which Sky Fiber launches is another aspect. And I, I, how it was explained to me is that, uh, the five G that cellular is using and they're trying to put multiple micro pops throughout town, it requires a lot more electricity to, in order to do that. For instance, the equipment that we have on the water tank, all that equipment is ran with just li, one, uh, computer wire, very thin Cat five line going down. So very low voltage going out. Uh, so the, the signal can radiate pretty far, but it cannot, it doesn't hurt people. But the cellular companies, what a lot of them are doing, the equipment they put up there has to be ran by one ten or even two twenty voltage. And anytime you amp up that kind of voltage, there is a possi, there is the possibility that people could be harmed by it. Um, if you're, they're in close proximity to that all the time. And so the, what I've heard people joke about is wearing tinfoil hats or something along those lines when they fully launch the five G. So that is my experience with it. And I've been told that it's mostly gonna be highly concentrated in, in major metropolis areas. 'Cause that's where they get the biggest bang for their buck with the customers. And the whole idea is being able to use your phone to do everything that a computer would do. You know, that's what they're trying to bring more services. So, um, I don't know what you've been approached with here or anything about the design for the five G cellular here. But there, I mean, you could look it up online. Uh, there's, there have been documented cases of people who have had more headaches and, you know, uh, more health issues pop up when they are around these high-capacity, high-powered, uh, repeaters. So I'm not the technical guy, but this is what I have found out from the people I work with. 'Cause I've always asked, is this equipment the same equipment the cellular companies? And they said, no, it's different. It's different, but it is the next generation of stuff.
So have we been approached by the companies to put up their five G?
Oh, I asked for this to be put on. I've been doing a lot of research on five G and, and the health risk on a cellular level to the human body that I think this board probably needs to hear and hear.
Oh, okay, 'cause I didn't know where it was coming from. I thought.
Yeah, I asked.
And, and I know Data's comment is absolutely right. I hear they're gonna hit all the metropolitan. Whether we'd ever get it here, I don't know. But I do know the concern to some of the bigger ones and even Clark County is they were monstrosities that were hanging all over their poles in town. And, and they were really ugly and they were trying, commissions were trying to, to really get a handle on it before they came in, that they can put conditions on it, so.
Yeah.
So if that was your point, then did you want us?
No, I'd like to probably just table it. Thank you for your, your, your two cents on it. Because I know there's some medical experts that we would like to invite in to give it, both sides of it, so we could hear it as.
So you wanna tackle it before we're approached by them, is that it?
Yes.
Thank you, David. I appreciate it.
So you wanna table it?
Um, yes. Probably bring it back next meeting. You think we can get it set up?
We, we will try.
Okay.
All right, very good.
Big man, we appreciate you giving him the confidence. Get up and speak.
Yeah.
I felt a lot there.
So moving forward for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove or to modify amended Sky Fiber site license.
My name is David with Sky Fiber.
I'm Isaiah Anthony Baker Als, um, David's assistant.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
So Ted, did we have something that you wanted modified on this or are you okay with the, the amended agreement?
Well, I, I get, I want to know if Dave, David's okay with it.
Yeah, I, we've had the legal go through it, and they didn't really see much of a difference, other than the platform you guys have on, on your amendments compared to our proposals, so. The only thing that I would point out is it has a, a date of June third, but that was a date that we put in there, uh, or June thirtieth, wasn't it? It, you don't get billed until the service is up and running, so, once it's ordered, then we start the process, and so you could disregard that date, not until it's verified, the service is working, that's when the billing starts.
What's the purpose of the camera? Maybe I missed it, the camera location?
Um, well, to give access, uh, to the law enforcement, they, they could control it, um, that's the whole idea, that they will be able to zoom in, uh, with a twenty-five times zoom, um, for, to look around town, and we, we've been asked by, uh, the, some of the television stations in, in Reno, if there's an event that's happening, and they, they wanted to know if, like, for instance, a big traffic accident, or a forest fi, or a fire, or something like that, they like us to zoom in on whatever might be happening, happening in a community. Now, of course, we would check with the sheriff's office before we, we did anything, um, like that, but it's general, it helps us do an instant check if there's connectivity, because if we get a camera, a camera shot at, at the main office, we know there's connectivity out here, and then we know that, that's one of the problem-solving issues that, that we go through whenever there's an outage.
What do you guys think about camera up there? I'm not in favor of it.
I'm not.
Not at all? Okay. I just think it's.
The, the, the camera isn't part of this agreement.
What's that?
The camera's a part of the agreement.
Yeah, that's what I was asking about, where, where at in the specific part of the agreement here.
We took out the camera because Robert, to, to give you some background, the original proposal from Sky Fiber was that in return for, uh, doing up the cameras for the law enforcement, uh, that would be what they would say, but Robert said he, he didn't participate in that agreement and didn't want it, so we just, uh, charged them a monthly rental rate of two hundred and fifty dollars. So there's no camera in this one.
So, Brian, what he's saying is the camera is not in this agreement?
Oh, the camera's not in the agreement?
It's not in that agreement.
Okay. So go ahead. Is that what you were going to say?
Robert, quick for the sheriff's office. Originally, when this was proposed, I was asked by Sky Fiber if we could utilize cam, um, cameras, if they put them on the water tower, and I told them, yes, we could utilize them for various things, um, however, they had to approach the county because it was a county structure.
Yeah.
That was the extent of our conversations.
Okay.
With them.
Thank you. Well, um.
Right, so it's not in this agreement?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, I was, just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing that, I didn't see it in there, um, but yeah, I just, I don't want any camera up there.
Okay, but that's not a problem, they could be removed. We, we usually give that as an option, because some counties are very interested in having cameras, so.
Yeah. What's everybody else's idea on that?
I don't, I don't think I'm for, I don't think I'm for the camera being up there either.
Okay.
I don't think we need a camera.
All right, good. All right, so, um, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, the amended Sky Fiber site license agreement, and do I need to authorize the chair to sign?
Second.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
So Brian made the motion, Patsy's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, very good. Thank you.
All right, and we'll have them take down those cameras then.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sure.
Moving forward, uh, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the Internet Service Agreement between, uh, Pathfinders DBA Performance Computing in Lander County.
Commissioners?
Yes.
Number seven and number eight were already approved. This is just the contract, uh, that's coming back in, in front of you to approve a service you've already approved.
Oh, okay.
Eight and nine.
Eight and nine, you mean?
Oh, eight and nine, yes, excuse me.
Thanks, Luke. Okay, so. So we've already approved them, we just are approving the contracts.
Is that what it is?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the Internet Service Agreement between Pathfinders DBA Performance Computing in Lander County.
All right, second?
I'll second.
All right, Brian made the motion, JR's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Moving forward, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the Internet Service Agreement between Sky Fiber and Lander County.
I'll make a motion, we approve the Internet Service Agreement between Sky Fiber and Lander County.
Okay, you have something to say first?
Uh, Robert, quick for the sheriff's office, I just want to make note that, uh, if, make sure there's an understanding on this, that we're not, or the county's not billed for these two Internet services until they're actually live and active, uh, we're currently waiting for the county to get the full block of IP addresses that we own before we actually move into this, so we don't have to reconfigure twice.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, and authorize the chair to sign.
I'll second the motion.
So, Patsy made the motion, Brian's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. So.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. For discussion and possible action to approve, uh, the memorandum of agreement between the Department of Interior, uh, deal of land management, Battle Mountain District Office in Lander County.
They couldn't make it in today, can we, uh, table the citation?
Yeah, we can do it. All right. Moving forward to twelve, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove, the job description for library assistant.
So these, um, tomorrow is the soonest that they could have the Elko County Library meeting, so we wanted to move forward with getting our job descriptions in place, if, uh, our meeting doesn't go well with extending the contract month-to-month basis.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions on that?
I do not.
I'm sorry, I, I missed what just happened on the MO, MOA.
Oh, so Elko County Library, you know, they're, they're.
No, no, the one with, no.
MOA.
The first one.
Oh, we tabled it, because, uh, they weren't able to make it in.
We tabled it because they were not able to make it in.
Oh, and they wanted to talk to us, I thought we were just changing for the date.
Yeah, I think that's all they had to change, um, but they, they had requested that we table it, so.
They wanted to be here.
Yes, that was my understanding, to table it.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I didn't speak to them personally, but.
Thank you, I was still going, wait a minute, what just happened? Thank you, okay.
So, so on the library assistant, HR, you've reviewed it, Bert, you guys, everything's good on?
It came off a pool pack with the modifications from HR.
Okay, so my question is, is that the person in charge? I mean, is that the supervisor, the buck stops here? They just call him an assistant?
No, the buck stop, no, this is just somebody so we can make sure the doors are open, the, uh, yes, it would be a county employee that, it would probably report directly to me, but the, uh, that's so we can open the doors and make sure that we have a library that people can walk in and out of.
Okay, so is there one library assistant for Austin and Battle Mountain, or?
Yes.
One in each, or what?
Yes, currently, but this is just the job description, so this isn't pertaining to how many employees, this is just the job description.
Right, no, I understand that, but I'm saying, will there, that is the name of the people that we will have running it? The library assistant?
He's going to run it, they're going to.
So, so they would be opening the doors and, and essentially running it in Austin, there would, there's probably going to be some more discussion further on how that will work here.
Okay, that is the name of our employees, that will be their title.
Yes, their position titles will be library assistants, because they are part-time employees.
Yes.
Okay.
These are not full-time employees, Austin never had a full-time, it actually increases their hours, but that's how.
Yeah, both, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that, that explains it, because I thought, I thought maybe that would be the one person in charge, but no.
No, definitely not.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the job description for a library assistant.
All right. All right, Brian made the motion, JR's second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Very good, moving forward, for discussion and possible action to set, uh, fire restrictions, a burn ban, and accompanying dates for, uh, all of Lander County.
This is just our standard burn ban we put in every year. I think Anger could speak to it more than myself.
Watching the news, I don't think we're any too soon to be doing this, but, um, we just set the day that it's in effect, do we have to, do we have to give notice? I mean, we can't make it effective today, we have to give notice?
No, I guess it wouldn't be wise to go and set it today, you got to give the publishing notice.
Well, historically.
Make it today and then just publish it?
Yeah, historically, when do we usually set the bed?
I always thought it was after July.
It's pretty, pretty dry right now.
But it's dry this year, and.
It's bad.
I don't know. You know, what are we, maybe the first of July?
So, so in the past, we've tried to make it effective immediately, I believe, and then we've, we've advertised it in the paper, um, there, the reason we've done that, I believe in the past, is because there are truly no teeth to this, um, without any county ordinance or resolution in place to be able to help some, hold somebody accountable, it's a, it's a recommendation to people, respect our, our public land, not burn.
Okay.
But we usually trailed or went in with BLM on that, so, is BLM or the Forest Service done anything at this point? Uh, because I haven't read anything from that.
I, I haven't seen anything, I'm just watching all the fires all in, around the Reno and Lyon area, I mean, they're really, they're just, every single night, there's several of them.
Fires around here?
Carrington, Carrington, Carrington City.
Yeah, Carrington, Carrington City.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but everything is so dry, I don't think.
It is dry.
Yeah, I don't think we're rushing this at all to do it.
So do we have a motion with a date?
Well, I would make a motion that we, uh, put the burn ban in effect immediately, and to authorize, um, county manager and/or staff to advertise.
All right, so I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
So, uh, Brian, Brian made the motion, Patsy's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Ron.
Very good, thank you. All right, moving forward, um, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove, moving forward with a vaccine passport ordinance. All right.
Okay, so we did the resolution on it.
We did the resolution, it was my.
And now, um, now this motion will have Ted put the or, put an ordinance together for us.
It was my, it was my, uh, my wanting it back on the agenda, and I brought it up there when we, on the, uh, meeting, where we passed the resolution, was to give the resolution some teeth, where, um, because I think for an employer, us as a county, to basically, uh, forbid people to be, to work or what, because they haven't been vaccinated or show a vaccine passport, I think it's not right, and, uh, that's, that was my whole thought process behind it, so I just wanted the resolution to have some teeth, so, looking at an ordinance.
That's what happens next.
Yeah, so I have a question, Ted. So, do, uh, um, do we have the authority to, um, hold anybody accountable who, say, for example, Marigold, well, Marigold's Humble County, any, but any of the businesses within Lander County, uh, for example, um, one of the restaurants, if they want to do this with their employers, do we have any authority to tell them what they can and can't do with their employees, or is that just for county, what the county can't do with our employees?
Well, you, you can make an ordinance saying something's illegal in, in our county. I'll be, now, are you asking me if it, if that will make sure that it won't be challenged? No, it, it may be challenged, but, uh, I've, since Brian originally brought this, I've, I've been researching it, and so I'm, I'm still researching it, but any ordinance can be challenged, Chad.
Okay, okay. All right, that's fine. All right.
Well, Brian's right, I mean, the, the ordinance puts, puts the teeth in the resolution, but I mean, we have lots of ordinances that people don't follow, and we don't necessarily enforce, um, for example, your rabies shot and licensing your, your animals, and I mean, you know, we don't, but, but it gives some direction on what we're doing, even, uh, and it does, it puts more teeth in, so.
Yeah, very good, you want to make that motion?
Uh, well, let me see here, do we need it as a motion, or just direction?
This is direction.
Oh, very good.
Yeah, I'd like to give our county manager direction to work with our, uh, county, uh, district attorney, uh, to, uh, forward the vaccine passport ordinance.
Oh, I would like a motion made, uh, to, to give some direction, if you please.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion that, uh, uh, that we move forward with the vaccine passport ordinance.
All, all second.
Perfect.
All right. Brian made the motion, Kathy's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, opposed? All right, we move forward. So, for discussion and possible action to approve, uh, approve, disapprove the temporary road closure permit for the annual Fourth of July parade hosted by the VFW, um, Post nine-one-six-five, starting on Fourth Street, then heading west on Front Street, turning south on Broad Street and Indian Elquis Park. The parade will, uh, take place on the July third, twenty twenty-one, at ten o'clock AM.
This is the same route we take every year, right, Ron?
Yes, sir.
Yes, commissioners, I, you need to take note that we are giving permission for a, uh, the, the county's giving permission for road closure permit, since of both state roads, we can't authorize the closing of, uh, state roads, but only we can authorize the permit that they get from the state.
I understand.
So we can.
They have to go to NDOT.
They have to go to NDOT for the state ones. We can only cover the hours.
All right, well, I'll make a motion, uh, that we approve the temporary road closure permit for the annual Fourth of July parade hosted by the VFW Post ninety-one sixty-five, starting on Fourth Street, then heading west on Front Street, turning south on Broad Street, and ending up at the Elquis Park. The parade will take place on July third, twenty twenty-one, at ten AM.
All right, second? All second? JR, you can, I'll give it to that. So Brian made the motion, JR's second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Very good. Sixteen, uh, for discussion and possible, um, for this, yes, discussion of the process of bidding for jobs in Lander County and how jobs are distributed, so.
My name is Patrick Ford, I'm in the floor seat there.
Morning, Pat. Go ahead and push your, push your little button there.
Sixteen. There you go. Um, I, I'd like to, to, I mean, Bert explained the bidding process of work that's, that's, I guess, statute with, with the state, but I'd also like the consideration for the work to be done in Lander County, um, for the HVAC, and I haven't had that kind of, I haven't had any, uh, type of consideration to do the work in Lander County for probably four years, and I'd like to, um, I know that, I understand the bidding process of, of, as Bert explained to me, um, of that, but I, my thing is I'd like to have the consideration to do that, and I haven't been, you know, prompted to, to have the work in Lander County. I'm here every day, I'm just about here every week, um, sometimes seven days a week, and I, I end, I just recently bought a house there in Lander County on Broad Street, and, uh, you know, I'd like to, to come back, I would like to work here, so.
So, let me get this straight, so, well, number one, I know this board has given direction, that we try to do as much local business whenever possible, but you're saying that you've never been asked to bid something in Lander County?
No, uh, um, at one point, I was told to cease and desist, to get off the Bank of America, um, building, which I did, and, um, I don't know the reason why, I was up there changing the motor, and I don't know the reason why that I was directed to get off the building, uh, ASAP, at that moment's notice.
Wait a sec, who directed, who's, who gave the cease and desist?
Hannah. So I don't know why, why, and then, so I, I said, do you, do you still want me to put in the motor, and she states, no, I don't want you to put in the motor, I just want you to bring the motor to me and write out the invoice, and I'll pay the invoice, and so.
Okay, so, Patrick, are we talking about, we aren't talking about positions, jobs that we actually go out for bid on, you're asking about just repairing things? positions, jobs that we actually go out for bid on? You're asking about just repairing things?
Well, both, I mean, both, I mean, in, in a sense of that, I, I don't know if I've been-
Cause the bid process doesn't stop anybody from bidding.
Right.
So, I would just like to clarify. Um, for clarification, the, the bid process is the bid process, I think is what, um, and professional services are the services that we can just request to be done. I believe that Pat is referring somewhat to professional services and being considered for-
The ones that we don't bid, okay.
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Okay, cause I'm, I'm a little confused, so, all right.
I don't remember, Pat, sorry. Um, I think it was that, that we didn't need to have a new motor and I really don't remember. That it was something that didn't need to be done, so, but I, I can't, I don't, I don't remember.
So, my, I'm pretty anal about doing work. I mean, I'm pretty, I, I try to do things the right way all the time. Um, there are some circumstances that I, I can't do some things, but other than that, out of this control, I mean, I'd just like the, the consideration to do this type of work in Lander County. I put in a bid for your maintenance contract. But also, I, I kinda, I, I'm going on a Jerry Maguire kind of thing here, where I wrote this, I typed up this, this speech to, to really look at the impact of, you guys got some nice buildings here in Lander County. I mean, or we do. And the bottom line is, you're gonna have, I might not be the one. I'm not saying that I'm perfect or I, I'm even, I can even maintain these buildings or, or the rec center, but the bottom line is, you look up on that roof and you make one mistake and you take out a unit, that's gonna cost you millions of dollars. So, if you don't manage, and I think that most of the system's ran by a Peter system, right? So, or-
This one is.
Monitor, yeah.
Not the rec center.
So, when you get to those types of, uh, you know, those types of, of equipment, if you don't really know what you're working on and you don't understand what you have there, um, you, it could ca, it could be quite substantial. And, you know, you get to a certain point where a contractor bids on a job and he does things maybe out of, um, maybe he, he, I mean, it, it happens all, all the time. The insurance company kinda steps in and then you could go out to the insurance company, but that doesn't mean that the insurance company is gonna, to, you know, honor that. So, you might be stuck with a, with a million dollar mistake if you don't have the right person. I don't say that I'm perfect for the job, that I can do the job, but if I have to get educated and have to get retrained to do those certain, certain things, you know?
After you, I, I didn't need to interrupt you, I'm sorry, I just wanted, I have a question. So, uh, uh, make me understand the bidding, case of your bidding jobs versus the other jobs he's talking about, cause I'm not quite sure what those jobs-
So, I believe what Pat's talking about is getting a propos, the right to even put a proposal in on a job. Um, so, if the job is twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand dollars, we get, we usually go out and get, get proposals. If it's fifty to a hundred thousand dollars, you have to get, you have to get three proposals to, and then, and then you choose off that. If it's over a hundred thousand dollars, then you have to go out to bid. And that's where the bidding process takes place. Um, so, anything pretty much under fifty thousand dollars, you can award the work, especially if it's professional services. You can just, um, Anna has the authority, myself has the authority, Donnie, to award that work to any said contractor that's, that's qualified in that, in that aspect of work. They can go in and, and you can give them the work, they get it done for you.
So, who has been doing that line, your line of work in our county, if you haven't, who's been doing it now?
Lone Wolf.
And where are they from?
And RHP.
Where are they out of?
Uh, RHP has a sister company in Winemucca and Lone Wolf's in Elko.
Okay.
But as far as this building, I did not, no, I didn't think Pat could work on the big, how big this was. So, that's my fault and I apologize. But since then, he's put in a bit, it's done a walkthrough and when we get it all figured out, I'll bring the proposals before you and you guys can make a decision.
Yeah, so, I mean, as far as the, cause that, I mean, we budget, we set the budget, it's taken out of the budget thing, so that would be something Bert and Anna would control. I mean, we're necess, necessarily. My, my concern is that we are using local business as much as we can, and I've said that time and time and time again. And that's, if we have somebody that's capable, um, that's, that's my direction. I mean, that's what I would say.
Well, that's a policy that we put in place.
That's right.
Well, and I wanna clarify what Anna said. I mean, I, I think that I, I'm not saying that I can't work on the equipment. I'm just saying that if there's something that I came across to where I can't, you know, I, I, I've never seen before, I'm not gonna touch it, you know, I'll, I'll shut things down and isolate it, but I'm not gonna really touch it until I have that proper knowledge of, of what's going on yet, you know? And if I have to call on the reinforcement, I got friends throughout the whole state that, that have been on my side for years that I've learned things through, so. It's not like I'm just stuck by myself and I don't have any other avenue to follow.
Well, and in the past, it's just been renewing the same, I didn't know, I knew you bought a house, but I didn't know you were here, living here.
Well, I don't live here, but-
And we were just renewing, so now that that's brought to my attention, you will be given the same opportunity.
Well, we're not big enough to have lists and lists of people that belong to-
I can get quotes from-
To all of it, right. And Anna has always looked at other areas, so I think that's the first thing. Um, you make it known to the county that yes, you're here, you're licensed and what you would like to be considered for.
Yes, ma'am.
And we most certainly will do that. And that's what we all do, that's what we try to do, so.
So, the quotes, me and-
I'll bring them before you probably-
Just like, like, you have another two, so yes, including the quote.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you, thank you.
All right. Moving forward, uh, on eighteen, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove, uh, Resolution 2021-13 directing appointing a net proceeds received in the month of May 2021. Hello, Ms. Lakin.
Um, Lakin Sullivan, for the record, if you guys have questions, um, I'd be happy to try and answer them. Otherwise, I think the resolution has to be read in to the record.
I do have. Hi, Lakin.
Hi.
Um, actually, I did, I clarified a couple of things, but, um, the, the main question I have is the resolution.
Okay.
I, I don't have any number.
Um, I gave Kathy a couple extra copies of the top page. For some reason, it wasn't in the scanned.
She didn't hand it to me, so I have to make sure I can get it. I have one.
Did you have, do you have one?
Oh, please, sir.
Uh, which one, Kathy? Yes.
Jared, do you have this?
That's what I was looking for.
Just towards the back.
When it's not scanned.
Right there, he's got it.
Okay.
Do you need one?
No, we got it. All right, Lakin, why don't you tell us what we're looking at?
Um, it's just the apportionment of net proceeds that we have to do every year when we get the money. Um, so, if you guys have questions on it, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, it has to, the, with your motion, it just has to be read in, the whole resolution.
I'd feel like reading, Patsy.
Okay. I'll take it.
Thank you.
If you don't have any questions, I make a motion. We approve Resolution Number 2021-13, the Board of Lander County Commissioners, a resolution directing apportionment of net proceeds received in the month of June 2020. Whereas on May twenty-seventh, 2021, the Lander County Treasurer received twenty-seven million, six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, forty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents in net proceeds. And whereas, it is the desire of the Lander County Board of Commissioners to appropriate the net proceeds as follows. Under our mandated section, commission fees, general fund, three percent, eight hundred and thirty thousand, forty-one dollars and forty-five cents, and fund zero zero one, zero zero zero, three one three four five. Assessor tech fees, two percent, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-six cents in accounts three hundred, zero zero zero, three two 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 three. China Springs, twenty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-eight cents, zero zero one, zero zero zero, three one three four zero. State medical indigent, five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-one cents, zero zero four, zero zero zero, three one three four zero. State indigent, which is collected by NACO, one hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixty cents, zero zero four, zero zero zero, three one three four one. Capital acquisition, two hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty cents, zero three one, zero zero zero, three one three four zero. Landfill, four hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents, zero one one, zero zero zero, three one three four zero. Hospital, four million, two hundred and sixteen thousand, seven dollars and two cents, zero six zero, zero zero zero, three one three four zero. School district, six million, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eighty-eight dollars and forty cents, zero seven zero, zero zero zero, three one three four zero. Totals, thirteen million, two hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and eleven cents. Under discretionary funds, CCP, three million, five hundred thousand, in fund zero five five, zero zero zero, three one three four zero. Buildings and equipment, two million, zero two nine, zero zero zero, three one three four zero. Road and bridge, one hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and six cents, zero zero two, zero zero zero, three one three four zero. Indigent, two hundred thousand, zero zero three, zero zero zero, three one three four zero. Airport, one hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and six cents, zero one two, zero zero zero, three one three four zero. Lita, twenty-five thousand, zero one five, zero zero zero, three one three four zero. Culture and recreation, five hundred thousand, zero five two, zero zero zero, three one three four zero. NPM Future Reserve Fund, eight million dollars, two hundred, zero zero zero, three one three four zero. Total discretionary funds, fourteen million, four hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and twelve cents, for a total between mandated and discretionary of twenty-seven million, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and four, no, twenty-seven million, six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, forty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents. Whereas, the Lander County Board of Commissioners desires to use discretionary net proceeds to fund CCP, zero five five, Buildings and Equipment, zero two nine, Road and Bridge, zero zero two, Indigent, zero zero three, Airport, zero one two, Lita, zero one five, Culture and Recreation, zero five two, and NPM Future Reserve, two hundred. Be it further resolved that the fiscal officer and the treasurer are directed to distribute the payment for net proceeds according to the schedule and authorize the chair to sign.
So, I have a question before a second here. How's, so what's the relationship and how does that work with state indigent and NACO?
Um, so Bert asked me that before the meeting and I wasn't sure, so I had to go look it up. Um, I'm not, I just use, uh, past practice on that, but I don't believe the word NACO should be there. It should be state indigent auto accident. Um, we are mandated by NRS to do it, but I think the role that NACO plays is they-
They were actually collecting the funds.
They, so they, they're in charge of kind of taking the applications for the local counties to get reimbursement. So, say if an in, indigent person gets in a, an auto accident and comes to our hospital and can't pay their bills, then they would put in an application to NACO or their designee to get that money.
It's just kind of a weird relationship. I, I don't understand what a lobbying firm would have to do with our collection of our money or distribution, or I just, I thought it was kind of odd.
It's their agreement with the state, they handle it.
The money does go to the state controller, though. It doesn't go to NACO. They're just in charge of being the middleman for those applications.
Again, just make us, it's kind of a weird relationship, so I'll second the motion.
All right, so, um, Patsy made the motion, Brian second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lakin.
All right, moving forward to twenty. For discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove, one of the following bids, the Yellow Brick Road Water and Sewer Improvement Project. One, Honeywell Construction in the amount not to exceed seven hundred and three thousand, seventy-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents, recommended by Public Works Director. Number two, Grape Basin Engineering in the amount not to exceed one million, two hundred and nine, one million, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-eight six cents.
Hi, Don.
I'm Don Prince, Public Works. Um, there's five hundred thousand dollars on the table here, a little over five hundred thousand, so, and Honeywell, they're a local company, basically. So, I recommend them. Hopefully, here, within the next month. Hopefully, before July. Yeah, cause they're, they're finishing up here and planning on moving right over, so.
I'll make a motion that we do Honeywell Construction in the amount not to exceed seven hundred and three thousand, seventy-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents for the bid on the Yellow Brick Road Water and Sewer Improvement Project. Patsy made the motion, Jared second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Correspondence reports future agenda items. Anybody have anything?
Um, no, I don't.
Other than forwarding the ones that we tabled?
Yeah, exactly, forwarding all the ones that we tabled.
Anything, Patsy?
On, on the next agenda, we will have, uh, no, um, I couldn't get ahold of, uh, Brian with Marcus and Arbach to explain the, the AB four ninety-five. So, in the, in the next meeting, we will go into closed litigation, so he can explain the full detail of AB four ninety-five, so we all have a full understanding before we remove ourselves from this lawsuit, cause I'd hate to put that much money forward and us make that motion today without a full understanding.
Yeah, very good. Um, do we have any public comment?
Um, just, just one question back, um, before your public comment. Um, do we have to, since we need a county representative on the grants going forward on the, uh, Community Youth Center in Austin, do we need to put that on? Or is that just somebody you were going to appoint to work within the county?
No, myself and somebody I'd probably appoint. We had Kyla, um, so me and Kyla were on that together, so it'll probably be Anna next. Until we, until we get that-
So, we don't need to do anything?
We don't need to do anything here.
Okay, you're in touch with, you're in touch with Pete?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
This is quick. There's a flag right downtown by the, across the street from the Owl Club. Well, Amy Nelson, is she doing public comment?
Yeah, I think, yeah, she opened up public comment.
We snuck in. Okay. It'll be quick. So, I don't know if that, that's on county property?
That is a county flag, yes.
That would sure, that needs improvement. So, I, I don't know if you guys have to gentize that or if you could just do that, but it's, the pole's really ugly and we need a beautiful, big one and we need lights and we need to be loud and proud.
It's, it's that small, it's that small white pole that's, that's kinda ugly painted right there in the, in the little planter in the parking lot between the, or between the parking lot and the sidewalk of, across the street from the Owl Club.
The flag's just kind of a little teeny flag and this is, this is, we need to step up with all that cash you guys got going on. Thank you.
Say, public com, do we have any other public comment?
Yes, I would like to say something.
Okay, who, can, state his name?
This is Ted Arora.
Okay, I couldn't tell if it was him or not. I couldn't tell if it was him or not.
I would like to, I would like to thank Robert Quick for all the work he did on the liquor licensing, uh, ordinance. He did a great job.
I agree.
And I want everyone to recognize all the work he did on that.
I agree, nice job. Really, truly, cause that really needed to be done. So, nice job and with all of you guys that worked on it, thank you, because that's been needed to be done for a while, so nice job.
Are we good? Do we have any more public comment?
Sorry, Ted, I didn't recognize your voice. I was in such a hurry to eat lunch, sorry, so. So-
So, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn then? Brian made the motion, second?
All second.
All right, Jared second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, very good, thank you.